Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, February 21. I see that all of our council is present on the Zoom call. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review and discuss items on the agenda for our March 1 regular City Council meeting. So council, if you'd please refer to that document. Currently, we have one item off the consent agenda, but I think we obviously, the nondiscrimination ordinance needs to be moved off the consent, so we might as well just, item 6H, I think, Mr. Brady, let's go ahead and move that over to items not on the consent agenda. Council, are there any other items on Monday night's agenda that you'd like additional information on?
Mayor?
Yes, let's start with Mr. Brady.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna mention, item 5A was heard last night from P&amp;Z. Nada probably should give you an update on that item because you don't have the benefit of the recommendations from the P&amp;Z, and they've added a condition, so we could brief the council on that if you'd like.
Okay, I know council has some questions, but maybe, council, before we get to that, why don't we see what staff presentations we have and then see what questions remain? So, thank you, let's hear about item 5A.
Mayor, council, the P&amp;Z added a condition of approval last night to basically require any modification to the site plan to go through planning and zoning board review and city council approval, unlike other processes where typically any minor modifications would have been done administratively. The neighbors were concerned that there could be changes that they were not being support, so they wanted it to go through the public hearing process, even if it's minor change. And so the P&amp;Z added that condition, which you will see that change on Monday, and they voted 6-0 to recommend approval to you as well.
Okay, I know Mr. Freeman has been involved in working with the neighbors on this, and I think that the concern was over the height of the parking garage, maybe another concern, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. And the close proximity of the garage, and there were some other conditions about the build of the garage and screening, landscaping, et cetera, and I think that's been detailed pretty well with our staff, and, but yeah, I'm sure this will need to come off the consent agenda.
Item 5A, so we can, you suspect that it's likely we'll have some neighbors show up to want to continue the conversation about their concerns?
Yes, I'm pretty sure.
Just a reminder, Mayor and council, that is for introduction.
Okay. Well, maybe Mr. Freeman will leave it on consent for now, just in case the neighbors want to keep their powder dry and show up for the public hearing, but obviously, for both you and the neighbors, if anybody requests for it to come off of consent, obviously, we will do that, and we'll listen to anyone who has anything to say about the matter.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Brady, any other staff presentations or additional information on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, that we do, and Mayor, I want to make sure we're clear, we, on the current draft agenda, 9A is the NDO, and it is not on consent already, so...
Okay, I'm probably looking at an older copy.
Yeah.
Mine was probably printed before that happened.
That's fine, and then, but we do have a presentation for council on item 8A, which is the development agreement and G-Plat agreement for the Brown &amp; Brown property. If you'd like, we have staff to get a presentation on that at this time.
I think we'd all be very interested in that, yes, please.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Jeff McVay, manager of Downtown Transformation, and with me today I have Angelica Gavara, who is one of our Downtown Transformation project managers, and we'd like to give you a quick overview of the Mesa Arts District's Lofts project, as well as the development agreement and G-Plat agreement, and we'll start out and give you an overview of the project.
Good morning, Mayor and council. So, as Chris mentioned earlier, this site proposes to redevelop the former Brown &amp; Brown Chevy Auto dealership. The site has been vacant for several years since 2014, and in 2017, the buildings were demolished. The site is approximately 9.7 acres, and the developer is proposing to construct approximately 334 units within five buildings. One of those buildings is a clubhouse, and two of the buildings will be facing on Main Street and are proposed to be four-story. The two buildings at the back or south end of the site are proposed to be three-story. In total, there's approximately 389 square feet of residential rentable units, and then a minimum of 105 two-bedroom units. The project will also consist of walk-up units, townhome units, and studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, so they're gonna have quite a range of product that will be available as part of this project. The project also includes a commercial element, so there is commercial ground floor space at 13,000 square feet that is proposed on the Main Street frontage buildings. In addition to that, there is, the building on the east end of the site has what we're calling the transitional residential element. So because of concerns about being able to lease and occupy that much commercial square footage, especially with looking at development that has occurred throughout the valley with mixed-use developments with commercial on the ground floor, residential above, we have seen a lot of projects that have that commercial space that does remain vacant for quite some time, and so, in the case that that were to occur, we have this area on the east end of that northern building that you see identified in red in the exhibit as the transitional residential element. So, that's an area that's about 12,000 square feet, and the developer will design and construct it to the commercial assembly occupancy, so it will meet all of the commercial design standards. And they will actively market their other 13,000 square feet on the other building on the west end and this 12,000 square feet on the east building for commercial uses. And what you see in this exhibit is also their construction phasing exhibit, so they will pull all of their permits at the beginning of the construction project, and all of it will be built together, but there is always a sequence of construction phasing as a project is under development, and so you see that the clubhouse will be part of the first phase, and then you see second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and so, the idea is, is that throughout construction of that project, the developer will continue to market all of that transitional residential element for commercial occupancy. If at the end of the project, they're not able to lease that area, then they will build it out for residential occupancy with the idea that they will continue to always market that for commercial tenants, using all commercially reasonable efforts, because it does benefit them to occupy it with commercial space as opposed to residential, but we just don't want that area to sit vacant, and so this is one way to encourage occupancy while allowing it to transition to commercial when the market is ready. So the project is also...
Excuse me, Angelica, I think Mr. Thompson has a question for you.
Angelica, is there, how are we going to know what their marketing efforts are? There's times when developers won't necessarily market, or if they do market, they're not really marketing to, you know, they're marketing to the low-hanging fruit versus marketing to the things that really build character in the community. How are we gonna manage or ensure that their marketing efforts are up to par?
Mayor, council member Thompson, we have a commitment and an agreement from the developer to continue to market that for commercial space. Because commercial space does bring in much higher rents than residential does, it is in their best interest to fill that with commercial space, especially because the building will be constructed to that commercial assembly occupancy, and we have added that as one of the terms of our development agreement with the developer.
My only fear is that, is that, you know, I've seen, on my time in council, I've seen developers that aren't actively marketing property, and it's not until the city gets involved and says, you know, "Hey, let's look at your marketing plan," that all of a sudden, things change. And, you know, my fear is that, you know, that there won't be active marketing, and then, at the end of the project, it all ends up turning into residential because they haven't truly marketed their commercial piece properly, and it ends up being all residential, and that's kind of not what we're wanting, I think, in this area. We really wanted to keep that commercial retail piece on the bottom floors and not turn it into residential. So how do we ensure that they actively market throughout the entire project and not just say they're marketing when they may not be?
Mayor, councilmember Thompson, the representatives of the developer are on the line, and so they are hearing these comments. We don't specifically have conditions that they report to us on how they're marketing, they're just that commitment, but I think that we can work with them going forward and ask them to give us reporting on how they have been marketing, and we can definitely share that information with you to make sure that we are getting the marketing efforts that we anticipate with this project.
Angelica, before we get started again, Mr. Luna has a question for you.
Thank you, Angelica, I appreciate the presentation. You know, we're seeing a lot of development downtown area, which is very exciting for me. So we're seeing the grid coming, you know, grid coming that's being built, and we see the development by the temple that's being built, so there's a lot of potential for people living in the downtown area. Are you anticipating that, you know, I'm totally for the commercial, I, you know, we've always, since I've been on council, a strike for this mixed use, having both commercial and living spaces. Do you think that we have a better opportunity with commercial now that we have all these other potential living spaces in the downtown area to really sell it commercial?
Mayor, councilmember Luna, I do, just because there are a lot of residential units that are currently under construction, there will be a demand for that additional square footage and commercial uses.
But Mayor and council, me just kind of weigh in on this, I think it's true, but if you see the density, I mean, I think, if I'm the developer, I don't want to speak too much for a developer, but if you look at the vacancies and the underutilization of existing space in downtown, that absorption's gonna take a while, so something new that's not necessarily the main path of, you know, where pedestrians are walking, you can see that there's a concern and a challenge that they have to be aware of, and I think we can monitor and work with them on their marketing plan, but, you know, every square foot is competing against every square foot in downtown, which is good, we've seen positive increases, but frankly, there's still a tremendous amount of underutilized commercial property in downtown Mesa, and it's gonna take a little while for all that to get absorbed.
Hopefully, they'll want to move into a new development with nice shiny doorknobs and those kind of things, so hopefully, they'll be able to entice those kind of commercial establishments into the area.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. As we discuss these projects, or maybe I missed it, were there timelines associated with these building projects, and if so, could you perhaps indicate that in our presentation? So, thanks.
Mayor, councilmember Freeman, yes, we certainly will address that, it's just a couple of slides forward. So, to continue my presentation, the project has been designed to allow for the construction of two additional buildings within the parking fields that are just south of the Main Street buildings. You can see on the exhibit there, the orange rectangles there, that those two buildings are, have been designed adjacent to Serine and to Hibbert, and if the developer begins or anticipates constructing within five years, we have agreed to good-faith negotiations for a potential development agreement, a customized review schedule, and a separate G-Plat lease. The project also has been designed to have a central thoroughfare and plaza. You can see the thoroughfare on the exhibits on the left, that they bisect the site from north to south and east to west. The thoroughfare includes vehicular access, bike lanes, and pedestrian walkways. They have been very nicely designed and landscaped and will provide some vital connections through that city block on that north, south, and east-west axis. On the east, or on the right-hand side of the slides, you can see the renderings for the proposed plaza. The plaza is just off of Main Street, so when you turn into the project, that's what you will see, you will drive through that plaza, and it has been designed to have outdoor seating, shaded areas, and art sculptures. In addition to that, the project has also been designed with great residential amenities to create a resort-style living. It includes the clubhouse, the pool, a fitness center, some nice cabanas around the pool, dog washing stations, which we are hearing that that is one of the amenities that a lot of residents are looking for. And then the project has also been designed to include eight electric vehicle charging stations. And in addition to that, some of the improvements that the developer will also be providing around the perimeter of the site includes some off-site improvements, which includes reconstructing the sidewalks, the curbs, to be able to create wider sidewalk areas, but also be able to provide landscaping around the perimeter of the site. If you recall and you've driven around the site, you'll see that it's in need of some updates and a little bit of TLC, so those landscape and hardscape improvements that the developer will provide will really help improve the aesthetic and the streetscape around the project. They will also be removing many of the unused driveways that do exist, and they have also agreed to maintain all of those public landscape improvements in perpetuity.
Okay, Mayor and council, so in addition to the development, as Angelica described, the developer also has some additional obligations. So the first of which is that they have to use all city services, including all of our utilities and solid waste services. They have to continue to pay the SID 228 assessment, which is essentially the assessment that funds Downtown Mesa Association. During the period of the G-Plat, the eight-year abatement, while the city would own the land, the developer will be continued, or will continue to have the obligation to pay that SSID, even though they are no longer the owner of the land. They have to be in compliance with the site quality and building quality development standards. Those are consistent with many of our other projects and get into the details of down into what type of materials they use for countertops and floorings, things like that. In addition, we, consistent with other G-Plat agreements, they will be paying an in-lu fee to our school districts that totals just over $200,000, the majority of which goes to Mesa Public Schools. Angelica described the off-site improvements and the perpetual maintenance obligations of those off-site improvements as well. In addition to those, I think we failed to mention that through the thoroughfare, there is some parking that is aligning the north-south leg of that thoroughfare, which they will be providing us a public easement for parking over that space, as well as a public easement over the thoroughfare in general to allow cars and bikes, pedestrians, to traverse through the site. On the city side, we are committing to a customized review schedule so that they can get their plans reviewed and out of the ground as soon as possible. We are also committing to a G-Plat lease, which would be an eight-year abatement lease. Consistent with the state statute requirements, we have conducted a third-party economic benefit analysis that does show that with the property being developed, it will increase the value of the property by over 100%, and it will generate more tax revenue than the tax abated. And in this case, I can say that this is the most benefit, the economic benefit that we have seen through a G-Plat lease, at least through the downtown projects, for the amount of revenue that it is generating. Now, councilmember Freeman, the key dates, they have already received their zoning clearance approval, so they have all their zoning entitlements. They are preparing their construction documents at this time, and through the development agreement, they have a requirement to start construction by January of next year. However, in discussion with them, their intent is to start construction sometime this summer, I believe, if possible. They would be required to complete construction within two years if they start in January by December 31 of 2024. And with that, we're happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Council, I'm sorry, vice mayor Duff.
Yes, thank you. Jeff, on the completion, is that for phases one and two, or just for phase one?
Mayor, vice mayor Duff, that is for phase one. As the development agreement is written, once phase one is completed, it starts that five-year clock, and if they notify us of their intent to complete phase two, then we would enter into negotiations on a future development agreement and future G-Plat lease.
When you mention to generate more tax revenue than the abatement, what does that look like? Is that in leasing, is that retail, or how is that calculated?
Revenues are generated, or they're calculated, include construction sales tax, includes the retail sales tax, includes the rental tax, as well as the multiplier effects of having those 334 new residential units in downtown as well.
So, including 334 residential units in downtown, so is that the assumed expenditure of those residents, or by the pure leasing of the apartments?
It includes all of those things, yes. So there's the direct revenues that come from construction sales tax and the sales tax, well, the rental sales tax that's generated from the units themselves, as well as the additional sales tax that's generated by the spending of the residents of the development.
Okay, this is a, the location of this development is probably one of the most premier or place to live along Main Street. There is no other great place to live along the Main Street, we don't have any apartments along Main Street. So, I really think that it is the obligation of the developer and our expectation in downtown Mesa for this to be a spectacular, over-the-top type of project, something that brings a lot of interest and pride to our downtown. I feel it'll be very successful. I still share my concern, like the other council members, about the commercial aspect along Main Street. We don't have any new commercial along Main Street, we have a lot of historic and old buildings, and they're wonderful and great, and yes, we need to fill them, but we don't have a product offering as far as a new commercial that might fit the needs and desires of businesses. We have a lot of residential coming here, I'm hoping that we can have a lot more commercial, and certainly that serves our city. On the face of building four and five, as you drive in that midpoint from Main Street, those are live-work units, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that one portion that isn't resident, that is residential, if they can't make it commercial, that will be 100% residential if they can't fill it, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would it be possible to make that a live-work area, so we have the opportunity, at least for maybe office space or some kind of business space with living above it, and it would be an easier transition to commercial? Is that possible? I know it's late in the game, but it is still bugging me after all these months.
So, Mayor, vice mayor Duff, so one of the elements that they've designed into the project is there are live-work units directly to the south of the commercial area that is designed along Main Street, and that transitional residential element, so that 12,000 square feet, if they're able to lease some of that for commercial use, it will get built out and occupied by commercial use, the remainder of it would be residential. So it's not necessarily that all of it will be residential, if they're unable to occupy it, it would be portions of it could be occupied by residential.
And if I may, to go back, well, I don't even know how long, many months it was when we brought that code amendment to allow this transitional element. In addition to just allowing the transitional element, we also changed the code to allow some of those less active uses on Main Street than we normally would have allowed. Originally, the code would have only allowed those active retail uses, we opened it up to allow things like office use or a gym, so there is much more potential use, commercial use of that Main Street space than would have been allowed before. It is, you know, the space has been, you know, designed out, and we can continue to talk with the developer and see whether they can market that also as live-work units. It wouldn't actually make a lot of sense for the Main Street units to have that opportunity.
I'd appreciate that. I think it's very important along that stretch, since this development is one block wide, that we're connecting people from downtown to pass that development to the grid and other development projects that we have further east towards Mesa Drive. If that area is not activated and busy, it's gonna be a dead space, and people won't go beyond it, so it is important that we have that Main Street filled for that activation, and of course, economically, it is a smart decision as well. And then my last comment is, along First Avenue, I noticed they have parking along there. Are we allowing or providing for a bike path along there? We have residents in downtown who are adamant about bike paths, and if we turn that into parking, it's going to make it a little difficult. We could actually push out the parking a little bit if we want to do a bike path next to the sidewalk and then the parking outside or something. I just have some concerns about the streetscape and how we integrate a bike path on First Avenue, so we don't have that be a dead area that doesn't allow transit on bike.
Mayor, vice mayor, right now, the parking as it's laid out on First Avenue is consistent with the pattern of parking, the diagonal head-in parking that is there today. They are not moving the curb line along First Avenue, so within First Avenue, there's plenty of space to add a bike lane. As part of this development, we did not actually request the developer to include a bike lane because it would have been a one-block section of bike lane that doesn't really connect to anything else, and until there is a connection that goes broader beyond the boundaries of this development, it wouldn't make sense to have the bike lane there. But, having said all that, there is plenty of room to be able to incorporate a bike lane at some point in the future. And while we were sitting here, I also received a text message from the project architect to make it clear that those units have been designed and can easily be laid out for live-work units.
I'm trying to find the slide that I saw, the, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, on the area with the diagonal parking, I see some landscape islands there, so if we were going to transition at some point to make sure we have a bike lane on First Avenue, that might prohibit being able to adopt to that.
That is correct, it would take some modification, but, vice mayor, I would argue that it's going to take modification well beyond the boundaries of this project in order to accomplish a bike lane on First Avenue, and it would be a larger project than just this one block.
Yeah, I understand that, I just want to make sure that we position ourselves to be able to accommodate that in our future planning, so, thank you.
And one thing that we did do as we were working with the developer on these off-site improvements was recognizing that we couldn't have a bike lane on the street in this time, but we did ask for them to include wider sidewalks adjacent to the property to be able to allow dual-traffic use, essentially pedestrians and bicycles to be able to occupy the same space.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna?
So, I'm back to my commercial, I think we really need a first commercial. You know, I travel New York all the time, and everywhere you go in New York, there's downtown grocery stores. You know, I see the influx of so many people moving in the downtown area. Are they even considering putting some kind of, maybe, a little grocery, a little market to feed those people that live in the downtown area? Is that something that they may even consider?
Mayor, councilmember Luna, we will make sure that they know that. Anybody that comes and develops in Mesa knows that everybody wants a grocery store, we make sure we tell them early on that a grocer or some type of market would be something that the residents down here would be very appreciative of. We'll continue to help them understand that and see if we can make that happen, but at this point, we have not gotten to the point where we talk about, have talked about what users they're trying to target here.
Mr. Haredia?
Two points. One, on the commercial side, are all, you mentioned, Jeff, are all the commercial flexible to be used with the new zoning that you talked about?
Mayor, councilmember Haredia, no, the answer is no, only that 13,000, or I'm sorry, that 12,000 square feet on the east end of that Main Street building are eligible for that transitional use.
Okay.
So I'll go back to the slide, there, just the slide that shows that area covered in red, that is the only area that is eligible for transitional use.
And the other, the other commercial would be typical, like, retail restaurant or office?
So there is 12,000 square feet, I'm sorry, actually, 13,000 square So there is 12,000 square feet, I'm sorry, actually 13,000 square feet because it includes their leasing office. That is strictly for commercial use on Main Street, not convertible. It must be commercial use, yes.
And then another question, sorry. Let me see what else. I spaced out on my other question, but if it comes back, I'll ask it, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff.
Thank you. I have one other question that I forgot. On the Jiplit, what are we getting in exchange? I understand they're doing the payment in lieu to the schools and stuff, but in order to do a Jiplit, I usually like to see something really spectacular or some... Are we getting any workforce units? It says it's market rate. We do need workforce units. Do we get some of that in there? Is something that I requested early on. I know that we can't require it in our planning due to state stuff, but is there anything in there that really benefits the, you know, mid-income workforce?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the public benefit that we are receiving with the Jiplit, in addition to the economic benefits, are the easement over the thoroughfare, the public parking easement, and the plaza easement for public use on the Main Street Plaza, as well as those off-site streetscape improvements. There is not, as I am aware, incorporation of workforce housing in this project.
I appreciate those, but it really doesn't help those who need a workforce housing, all the streetscape. So whatever we can do to push in that direction would be very helpful and useful for our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson, and then back to Mr. Heredia.
Yeah, Jeff, my concerns continues to be the same as Mr. Luna's. You know, the commercial aspect, you know, to me is probably one of the more important pieces of this project, and if you have a minimum of 13,000 square feet of commercial space that you're building, and then you're allowing 12,000 feet of that to be potentially converted to residential, I mean, that only leaves you 1,000 square feet of rentable commercial space, and I...
Mayor.
I just have a hard time swallowing, you know, that piece.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, let me clarify. They are building out 25,000 square feet to a commercial standard, of which 13,000 square feet must be used for commercial, and 12,000 square feet have the ability to be a transitional use.
Okay, gotcha. All right. I didn't see the 25,000 in there. I just saw the minimum of 13,000 square feet.
That is in addition, yeah, I'm sorry. That is a minimum of 13,000 they have to build and use as commercial. They are building another 12,000 square feet to that commercial assembly occupancy standard, so it...
In addition to, okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia.
Hey, I remembered my question. You mentioned townhomes, condos. Are those, is everything for lease, or are there some for-sell properties there or planning for-sell properties in the future?
Mayor, Vice, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, everything is for rent.
For rent, okay.
Thank you. Additional questions, Council? I feel for the developer. It's tough to develop a project that's literally outside the window of the entire city council and on such a strategic piece of property that we all are so, have so much affection for and that we all understand the strategic significance, you know, to our downtown of this piece. So I appreciate Opus tackling that because we all have strong feelings about this piece of property. Council's asked a lot of great questions, and I just checked all my questions off as... And I know Mr. Freeman's got another question as well. But the only remaining question I had, based on the presentation, was eight electric car chargers. That seems inadequate if, given that every time I pick up a newspaper now, I hear, I see another car company saying that they're going to phase out, you know, non-electric car production over the next few years. I assume that it'll be, you know, 10 years from now, there's not going to be eight electric car chargers in that parking lot. There's going to be a whole lot more. Is that anticipated in our development guidelines somehow?
Mayor, there is nothing in our development standards that would preclude them from adding on additional car charging stations besides going through the permitting system and making sure that they're, you know, designed and constructed safely. So yes, if, I think if the market changes and they find out that they have a bunch of residents well beyond eight that want electric car charging, they would probably need to change their program a little bit.
Great. Well, I know Mr. Freeman's got another question, but I just wanted to say that we've been talking about this project for years, and I know that staff, Angelica and Jeff and Mr. Brady and others have invested a lot of time. There's been a lot of scrutiny. As I indicated, this is a very high-profile location in our community. So I'm very proud of what we see here. Is it perfect? No. I mean, if each one of us were designing it, it would be slightly different, but it's pretty good. And the high level, the level of amenities that's attached to this property, I think it's really, it reminds me of The Grove, I know, just down the street in front of the temple. We've got affordable housing, we do have some workforce housing, and we're starting now to see really, I would say, above-market housing, just in terms of the amenities and how attractive and desirable a place to live. So that's, to me, very exciting to see. Mr. Freeman.
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to bring up The Grove's, excuse me, the Vice Mayor and I walked it like maybe 10 days ago, Vice Mayor, or so, two, less than two weeks, and it was just a beautiful development. And with that said, there are some commercial and retail components there, but the mixed use of housing, this will set the standard and template for, I think, the rest of the development moving west in downtown Mesa. And I was just really impressed with the build out there, and as we know, hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent for the, and I'll use the word resurrection of that area, so that it will be just a gemstone for that corner and around the LDS temple. But then again, it's being leased today, there are residents living there, and I think there's said about five units a week are being leased out. So with that said, I just, I just think we already have something in play, and we'll see how the rest of it works out going west. So I'm excited about the grid, Opus Development, Eco Mesa, and others that we'll discuss. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And I know we're going to continue this discussion and our next agenda item as well, so it's very, very good that we're, that this discussion will set us up well for the next discussion. Council, any additional questions on this agenda item? All right, again, so hearing no objection, I think this will continue to be, well, this is not on the consent agenda, right? Is it necessary that we have a public hearing on this on Monday?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry. Yes, it's required for us to have the public hearing, so we have to keep this off of consent.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brady, any other staff presentations on anything for Monday night's agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Any additional information you'd like for Monday night? Vice Mayor Duff.
I don't need more information, but I just want to put a shout-out for Item 6E, the expansion of the Mekong Plaza. It's been such a success and gem of our city, and I'm just thrilled to see them expand with the market there. And so that 6E is, I think, the site planned for that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to invite Frankie to talk about that for just a little bit because then Frankie, I know you have talked with the developer and they've shared with you what their plans are, and I think those of us that appreciate the Asian District are all excited to see Mekong expanding. Anything, what have they took?
No, definitely. Definitely. I think, thank you, Jim, for bringing it up. I think, you know, they're adding about 30, 35,000 square feet of retail space, another wing to Mekong. They anticipate to have, you know, a garden for folks to, you know, hang out and outside of that space and be more, even more welcoming to folks along Dobson. And so it's a, it's a great expansion for them as they're, you know, you drive by there every day, especially during lunchtime and dinnertime, and they're always full, and so that much-needed expansion there that will create more activity and more attention to the Asian District. So they're really excited, and I think we are, we are excited as well to activate even further that area.
You know, in a couple of weeks, I'm going to announce, here's a spoiler alert, you know, a podcast that I've been working on, telling some different stories about things going on in Mesa. And a week ago, I interviewed Peter, the owner developer of Mekong Plaza, and it's an amazing life story that, and so I'm really looking forward to getting to know him and what a remarkable business person he is and how fortunate we are that he came to Mesa, Arizona in 2007 and bought a, an abandoned Target building and worked really hard and put a lot of money at risk, and now we have this amazing Asian District. But the story of the Asian District all goes back to Peter and this building. So it's fun to see it continue to be so successful. Council, anything else for Monday night's agenda? Okay, hearing none, let's go back then to the agenda for today's meeting. Item 2A is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the future disposition of city-owned land within downtown area. Mr. Brady, I'm guessing we might see Mr. McBay back up at...
He hasn't moved. He's still sitting here waiting, so he's ready to go. Morning, Mayor. You took my joke. I was going to say it's good to be back after such a long absence. Today, I want to talk to you about a policy for the disposition of city-owned land going forward. But before I do that, I wanted to give you an overview of what has been accomplished to, in the past 10 years. It's actually very significant. I haven't really put numbers to this really with any detail for quite a while, and it's more impressive than I even have been describing in the past. So in the past 10 years, there have been eight projects that are either completed or under construction. Seven of those projects have occurred on city-owned land in which we leased or sold that land to the developer, 23 acres, we have, that we have used to, actually, we've been very intentional in our use to help facilitate the redevelopment in downtown. That's equated to 694, just under, just under 700 new residential units, almost 40,000 square feet of commercial use, and with ASU and Benedictine University, just under 170,000 square feet of institutional uses. Now, we all are very well aware of the one private development that is currently under construction in this period, The Grove on Main, which is about nine acres and has 283, 283 units, 5,000 square feet of commercial, and about 18,000 square feet of institutional use. And Vice Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, I got to go on another tour yesterday, and they've come along even further in the week since you were there, and it is just a wonderful project. Now, looking forward, projects that we have currently under construction that have been approved or we are currently in negotiations with represent another five projects, three of which are on city-owned land, which include Eco Mesa, Country Club of Maine, and our Transform 17 project. Knowing that Transform 17 has a lot of planning involved, there's a wide range of residential that could happen with that project. So when I have that range of 800 units up to 1,800 units, that reflects the base number of units that we have with the projects that have been approved, plus the base number of units we believe will come out of the site, Transform 17, plus the high end of what Transform 17 could accomplish. It's also the same reason why there's a very large range on the commercial uses that we don't know how much commercial activity Transform 17 will generate. Now, on the two private-owned properties, that includes the Opus project that we just described, as well as a workforce housing project being completed by Cardinal Capital on McDonald and Second Avenue. Between those two projects, we have about 12 acres and 500 units of residential. Now, looking at this in a bit different way, just taking all of this in totality, all the projects that have happened in the past 10 years, including all those that are under construction, approved, or currently in negotiation, we have completed 326 new residential units, which is mostly in the Escobedo at Verde Vista and the Encore and Residences on McDonald project. However, of those that are under construction and approved, we have just under 2,000 units that are in construction, approved, or soon to be approved, which also includes another, you know, 66,000, minimum of 66,000 square feet of commercial use and 140,000 square feet of institutional. With all of that development activity happening, it's also very exciting to know that we still have a significant amount of interest coming into us from developers to have additional projects, whether they be on privately-owned land, but we also have several statements of interest on our city-owned land. So right now, we have just over 140 acres of land owned by the city in the downtown. Of that, about 24 acres is truly undeveloped land, and that, the majority of that is in the area of Transform 17. The remaining 25 acres is parking. While that has development potential, I think it's important to note, it also has a viable and active use today that is important to our downtown to keep that surface parking available. So in the past month or so, we have received requests or statements of interest from developers on four different properties. The first is our Drew Lot, and some council members might remember, not that long ago, we went through an entire process to have a, go through the courts to have a deed restriction that was put on that property back in the 1950s removed, just so we could actually entertain development opportunity on this site. And after, after we went through that process, we had a memorandum of understanding with the developer to do a 15-story boutique hotel and luxury apartment complex. Since that time, that memorandum of understanding has expired just through natural termination of time, but that same developer is the developer of Eco Mesa, the Habitat Metro. They have expressed a serious interest to do another Eco Mesa residential project, which would be a seven-story, about 105-unit development, and their preferred site is the Drew Lot. Having said that, the second site on this slide, the South McDonald Lot, that is a piece of property that is just south of the Residences on McDonald, which is under construction right now. Those are the three 24-unit residential buildings, the Long McDonald, that are currently under construction. We have interest from two developers on that site. First is from the developer of Residences on McDonald. That's the Mesa Housing Associates that has done Encore and the market-rate housing that's just on the corner of McDonald and First Avenue, as well as interest from Habitat Metro as an alternative location for a second Eco Mesa, as an alternative to the Drew Lot site, if there was such desire. We have also, in recent weeks, received interest from Caliber Investments on both the Green Lot, which is 105-space parking lot, that that's the one that's right behind Milano's Music, as well as interest on the Orange Lot, which is a nearly 200-space parking, public parking lot that would be the one behind what used to be the Surf and Ski site. And in both instances, the Caliber has expressed an interest to develop market-rate residential above podium, which would also include a replacement of our public parking lots. Now, knowing that we have all of that, all of that interest, I think it is important for us to actually have a discussion and consider how we would like to use our land and to encourage future development. We have, as I described, we have in the works, whether they're under construction or soon to be under construction, just under 2,000 dwelling units, in addition to a significant amount of commercial space. It is our, is our belief and our recommendation that staff should spend their time helping to facilitate the successful development and absorption of those projects that are being developed on city-owned land, as well of those, as well as those projects that are currently being developed on privately-owned land. That would mean that we would not pursue future negotiations of new development on city-owned land while these current projects are being developed and absorbed into the market. This is, this would allow time for the market to actually... market. This is, this would allow time for the market to actually absorb that significant amount of development that is coming, as well as, it would allow us as a city to, to realize gains on the significant investment we have made as, as a, as a city in the development of downtown. And by significant, by, by investment and, and getting a return on investment, I don't necessarily mean increased land values. Really, I mean increased intensity, increased quality, increased opportunity for new development that we haven't seen today. I think it's notable that, that all the development that I've described up to this point is, is market-rate residential development. We don't, we haven't yet seen a, a for-sale product, a condo product. And, and it would give us, I think, an opportunity to let some of this, 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 these projects be completed and also be absorbed to show that there is a successful market and also gives us a better position to, to, to go out into the market and look for more opportunity for those types of developments that we aren't seeing today. And it's also notable that it's, we are still a year away from substantial completion on ASU and are turning that building over to ASU. It would give us an opportunity also to, to see how the ASU development, having those students here, will impact the market and the interest in downtown development during that time. I think it's important to note, though, if we do go forward with this policy, that we are, we're not going to rest on our laurels. We still have a heck of a lot of, of underutilized land in downtown Mesa that's privately owned. And we will continue to work with our private property owners to identify and solicit opportunities for new development. There is actually quite a bit that we are working on now that is on privately owned land that we will continue to work with. And we also will continue to focus our, our efforts on the adaptive reuse of our existing building stock and attraction of new businesses, new restaurants, new retail users in those, in those buildings. I know I just went through a lot quickly, but I'm happy to entertain discussion and, and questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm sure we've got a lot. Let's start with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when it comes to the development, I mean, this is, this is where I really, I love to have the conversations. And I, and I think you're right, Jeff. I think, I think it's important that we allow projects to bake a little bit and, and get to, you know, come to fruition and get to completion before we start, you know, developing more. And, and I say that because I think the market changes. And especially with everything that's going on in downtown right now, whether it's ASU, or whether it's the revitalization of the temple, or even the Brown and Brown piece that we were just talking about, as, as development and residential comes in, I think that's going to change the market. It could be that we end up having more commercial and retail-type stuff in our downtown, more restaurants. And so I think, I think it's important to allow, allow the area to bake a little bit and, and see, you know, how the market reacts to the current projects that are going on. I, I love the for-sale idea. I mean, I would love to see more for-sale properties in our downtown area, especially when it gets into condos and so forth. But I also want to make sure that we're not impacting existing projects from expanding, if that makes sense. Because I know that there's, there's projects with, you know, with parcels that are congruent to their existing property that they can build on. And I don't want to stymie development altogether in our downtown, but I still want to make sure that, that we're taking, you know, we're taking a cautious approach and we're allowing, you know, the projects to mature before, you know, you know, building another cornerstone, I guess. So I, I, great presentation. And, and I'm on board. I, I agree with what, what you're trying to accomplish, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Luna?
Hey, Jeff. Thank you for the presentation and the good job that you consistently do, you and Elica. I'm also concerned, you know, we have great developments in downtown area. We're very excited about that. You know, we have the Groves, we have the Grid, we have the Opus property, we have Eco Mesa. So we're going to have a lot of people hopefully in the downtown area. But we're going to have to wait a little before we encourage more of this kind of development. Because the last thing we want is a bunch of developments and not residents living in the downtown area. So I, I appreciate your, your project, where you're moving forward. I would encourage, if anything, let's not use so much city property, but encourage private development and those kinds of things. I think that's more important. And I agree. I think, you know, if they're going to be leasing apartment buildings, that doesn't really ensure that they're going to be there for a long time. That, you know, it's a period of time. But when you actually buy property, when you buy a condo, that really, to me, signifies you're going to be there for a long period of time. So those kinds of things, to me, are more encouraging. And I would encourage you to pursue those. But yeah, we, you know, we're going to have to take a little pause, maybe, wait till we've complete with ASU. And hopefully, ASU is going to continue to expand in the downtown area. But let's give it some time. Let us see, see what happens. Let's see what happens with cahoots and, and working with the Benedictine students. Our hope is when they work with those students, we have entrepreneurs, they decide to live in the downtown area, take up occupancy in, in the grid, or if not, in the Opus building and the commercial areas. That's what we're hoping for with some potential entrepreneurs. But yeah, I think maybe we just need to take a breath, take some time, let this percolate for a while, and then see where it takes us. So good job, your presentation. I liked the trajectory that you have in plan and wish you success.
And Mayor, Councilmember Luna, I just want to reiterate, though, that pause isn't going to give us a whole lot of time to breathe because we do have a lot still in the works. My numbers are conservative. There are, there are quite a bit of private development opportunities that are coming our way and that we are actively working on today.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff?
Thank you, Jeff. You know, one of the reasons we have so much development wanting to go on in downtown Mesa, well, it's a great place to be, of course. But part of it is the, the great planning department and the work of Jeff's office and transfer nation of downtown. He does a fabulous job and has a great reputation out there. And so thank you and congratulations on the success. And if you can make sure you don't retire or do anything like that until we're fully done with it. But talking about how we see downtown, you're talking about a pause to reassess. My question is, what does that look like until like 24? Is that what kind of timeline you're thinking, or just waiting to the completion of the existing?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think that the reassessment is going to be an ongoing, ongoing effort. As products, as projects are completed and as they're absorbed, I think we'll reassess ongoing. You know, the, we continue to go back to the Grove, but they aren't even complete. And every single family, the, every detached single-family house that was for rent has been spoken for. 60% of the attached single-family has been spoken for. And I believe 20% of the first building that they have opened has been spoken for. And they are still under construction. So there is strong demand in our downtown for residential. So I think it's important that we continue to look at that demand and where the market is and see whether there is a reason for us to, to release some of our land and whether we go through public offerings or, you know, RFPs, you know, or, or the success with auctions these days. But we will continually reassess this.
Great. And that was another comment I wanted to make. We have a lot of residential going on in downtown, which is great. Our current residential mix is probably about, in the square mile, maybe 3,000 residents. It's not really much at all. And, and I could be wrong on that, so don't quote me on it. But do you feel with the residential we have going on, it is too much of an absorption and too short of a time because we will be looking at more than doubling our population?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm very optimistic that, that the, the demand exists for downtown Mesa and downtown residential. The nice thing is, is that the, how our projects are spaced out, they are going to be coming online with gaps in between. So the Grove is going to be completed. The Grid will complete after that. You know, the, the Grove, I'm sorry, the Arts District's lot will, will be completed after that. So there will be a nice spacing. Eco Mesa will be in there as well. So I don't, they won't all be coming to market at the same time. They'll, they'll have a little bit of gap. And they all kind of, they all kind of cater to a different marketplace, you know, taking Eco Mesa. There's going to be a certain, a certain type of tenant that's going to gravitate towards Eco Mesa versus, versus the, you know, the Groves project. So I, I'm not concerned of, of the absorption myself.
Great, great. And, and one of my concerns, too, is with our fast growth in downtown and new development, is one of the special characteristics we have in downtown is the character of the buildings and the historic nature and history that we have here. And developing really quick, so one of the reasons I try to push on these developments to make them special, I'm concerned about a kind of a monoculture of new development that we start sashuraging too much of the new feel, not to have more, I feel like an organic growth or infill or mix into our downtown, so we don't lose that character. But one thing overall is I think we need to assess our downtown, like you had mentioned, really create the vision of what we think we want at this point in time. And of course, that will evolve over time as it develops. And start making the invitations, the, attracting the type of businesses, the type of retail, the type of residential that we need in order to create that diverse mix for a successful downtown. We, I'm concerned more that we entertain what developers line up at our door, and we're not taking the fortitude to define what our downtown is going to look like, what it needs, what's the character going to be, rather than even with well-intentioned developers, that they're defining according to the projects they bring to us. So being a more of a proactive in this position instead of an absorption position. I appreciate all the work that you do. I, I trust your judgment immensely and look forward to continuing the development of downtown in a wise, constructive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Heredia?
Yeah, I'm curious to see, hear any status because it seems like the conversations that we've had on these developments, you know, Transformed 17 is, is another, just a big, big development up ahead. And wondering what's the status of that project, what we're, what we're seeing as far as any updates there?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, I will, I would, I'm, I'm, we are targeting, bringing our memorandum of understanding and a concept, developer's concept to council in March. I'm sorry, I take that back. March was going to be very aggressive. The first meeting in April, April 5th is our intention. We actually met with the developer just yesterday and the attorneys to hammer out the final business term that we are working on, on that MOU. Once that is agreed upon, it's every intention to bring it to council very soon.
Okay. Because it seems like that project will really define further kind of where we're at, where we want to be at for the future, and then figuring out what's, what's, what's a pause or kind of recalibration of, of activity that we want to have in, in downtown. The other comment is around redactive reuse. You mentioned it towards the end of your, your, your presentation, but i- is there further activation of that from, from, from developers that are thinking about the, the redactive use of the current buildings that, that we have in downtown that need some TLC? Like Vice Mayor Duff mentioned, I think what makes our downtown unique than our, our other neighboring cities that have seen tremendous growth is that, you know, a lot of the growth has been on new products, which is, which is great. I think the look and feel of our downtown really creates this unique vibe for, I think, people to be more, even more attractive to, to the potential that we can have in downtown. So is there further maybe activation on that end of, of what we're looking at in the near future?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the, the, the short answer to that is yes, there's definitely activity going on. The longer answer is, is that, actually, it shouldn't even be a longer answer. An extension of that short answer is you'll hear announcements soon on, on, on several new projects underway. Hopefully, we'll be bringing some of those to you as well. And they all include adaptive reuse of, of existing spaces, new tenants that will, that are coming in. So the Caliber owns, well, Caliber Investments is one of our larger property owners on Main Street. They have a number of tenants they are actively working with now, and I think there'll be announcements coming from that, as well as some of our other property owners that have been landing new tenants in, in recent days that, that I think you'll be hearing announcements of as well. But at the same time, I don't want to, to ignore how much growth and success we've actually had in the last year in the adaptive reuse of existing buildings in downtown. Even during COVID, we've had the addition of, you know, five new restaurants, two new retail spaces, which is, is quite impressive considering the, the current market.
Thank you. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with us. I, I don't want the headline from this meeting to be that Mesa's hitting pause, you know, on our downtown development. These are the challenges that we were hoping that we would, would have. You know, as, as Mr. Brady and previous councils, you know, made decisions to bring Light Rail downtown and to build performing arts centers and to bring ASU and all, all the things that we've done to, to create this, this environment where we are now the cutest girl at the dance and people are lining up wanting to come to downtown, that's great. You know, and, and, but I, I do agree absolutely that, but again, the, the subject that we're discussing this, this morning is what should we do with the unsolicited bids that we're receiving on city-owned property? And I, I think the answer to that is, is that we need to make sure that, that we know what our, what our priorities are. For example, a few, we've been struggling with what to do with the federal building for several years now. And Vice Mayor Duff will tell you that there's lots of business people that were approaching us saying, I brought my checkbook. I want to buy that building right now. I'll turn it into something amazing. And that's an attractive offer. But I think with Mr. Brady that said, hey, before we start disposing of public assets in downtown, let's make sure that, that we don't, we're not going to regret that later because, you know, that there will be city needs. And if, and if we've given away or sold all the property in downtown and we're not able to continue to provide for the city needs that we have in downtown, we will look back on that as a mistake. So I, I know that we have many downtown plans. And I, I just am, and I do endorse the idea that, that we shouldn't perhaps, we're not at the point where we need to encourage unsolicited bids on city property. But I'm, I'm uncomfortable with saying that we're, you know, adopting a moratorium on, on disposing of city property and, and entertaining any proposals. You never know, you know, what we might discourage if, if that's the, if that's the policy that we announce. So I, I think, Jeff, I'm, I'm curious to know, what are the things that we know we can't give away or sell? You know, what are the things, the essential services that we want to protect, or the, the future city uses that we want to plan for? And once we carve those out and say, you know, we have to maintain X number of acres for these important things, then, then I think we can answer the, address the question of what's left that we, you know, is even, we're able to talk about. Can you address that for a minute?
Sure, Mayor. But I'll, I'll start by saying, I do, I have no illusions that, that this presentation is going to stop any developer from knocking on our door and still coming and talking to us. This is more for us to be able to, to talk with them about how we want to move forward with our, with our property. They're still going to come and they're still going to make unsolicited offers to us, and we're still going to have to take a look at those. But going forward, you know, the majority of the land in our downtown that has easy development, easier development potential, I'm not even going to say easy, but easier development potential are the surface parking lots. They are, they are an important asset to us today. And as you remember with Eco Mesa, we, we require that they replace one-for-one every bit of that public parking because it is such an asset to downtown. So right now, one of our concerns is to continue to entertain offers on public parking that is an important asset to us. And that would be taken out of, while it would be replaced as part of a, a development. would be replaced as part of a development, it would be taking something out of commission and causing disruption of our downtown and of the businesses in their parking during a period that is, you know, kind of a challenge for our businesses. And we want to help encourage and grow the businesses that are there, and bring in the new businesses, and that parking is an important asset to us. I, I see Mr. Brady leaning forward, so.
I'm sorry, I would say this about giving up parking. We still haven't seen a project, we have plans to do these replacement of parking with parking garages, but we yet have had a project actually come out of the ground to do that. We don't have that experience yet. And so part of my, our, I think, our reluctance to take unsolicited proposals, which I, I would caution the council, I think we've primed the pump with unsolicited proposals. The question going forward is, do we continue to do development deals based on someone just knocking on our door and saying, I have a great idea? I think what we're also saying is the parking areas do serve a purpose today that they're very important to. And until, in my mind, until we see if one of these projects actually come out of the ground, build the podium for the replacement parking, and see if that still functions well and serves the other downtown businesses well, I think it'd be somewhat risky to keep doing those kinds of deals without really having the experience of whether they work or not, and recognizing the interruption and impact they have to our existing businesses. And not, not all of them are really excited about that parking option. So I think we're just saying, there's a lot of opportunity for development in downtown Mesa, and we want to support it. We're not putting anything on pause. The only thing we're saying is, we have proposals for unsolicited development of our assets, parking lots. And what we're saying to council is our recommendation is we, at this time, suggest that they go look for other property in downtown to develop. And at some point in the future, we would have a strategic decision about whether or not giving up city assets of parking for a future development makes sense. And what should it be? The city should maybe be in front of that discussion. We should say, well, is this more residential? Is it owner-occupied residential? Or is it commercial development? What is it? Right now, today, we're only going with what the developer tells us they want to do. And I just think we're in a position where there's enough activity that if we were a private developer, I think we would wait and see the market mature some more before we would start putting our assets on the line. I, I don't think we're doing anything to pause anything. Now, Mayor, you're right. If someone came to us and wanted a eight-story luxury condo owner-occupied development, we may come back to council with a different perspective. But right now, what's being proposed to us is more of the same, or not necessarily a very clear vision of what they're wanting to do. I think people are just wanting to position themselves with property in downtown. I like the way you said that, Mr. Brady. I, I guess that, that's my, what I was hoping to hear is I think we need to get in front of it. You know, we, we need to be the ones that carve out what's in the best interest of our community. Time is on our side, you know, right? I mean, Mesa City Government's going to be here 100 years from now. And so there's not a fire sale, you know, that, that needs to occur here to, to, to develop all of this property as soon as possible. But I think, so I, I, again, I, if, if, once we carve out what we need, what we, you know, is not negotiable, then I think, you know, as really good deals present themselves, I, I think it's, we, we still want to be able to entertain that. Downtown Mesa has a lot of capacity for, for density, right? I mean, there, there's a reason we've spent hundreds of millions of dollars on, on infrastructure in downtown Mesa, it's to support a dense downtown. So I, I'm not afraid of, you know, bringing more people and more businesses downtown. It's going to be a long time before that maxes, maxes out. But so this has been a, a great and important discussion, but I guess I'd like to hear back from, from staff going forward. Here are, here, here's the red line that we're not going to cross, you know, we, we, going forward, we, we can't put up for, we, we can't entertain, I guess, I, I don't want to see a, a moratorium on unsolicited bids. I think I want to say that we're going to have very high standards, and we're going to have extreme scrutiny for any proposals that might come in. Like you say, if someone wants to do an owner-occupied, high-rise, residential, luxury residential building on a piece of our property, we might listen to them. And so I guess I'm a little nervous about sending a message that, you know, don't even bother asking, because we're not interested. But I, I know I have, Jeff, I know that's not what we're saying, but I just want to make sure that we do send that message. That's a fair point, Mayor. I think we, we would concur. I think the reason we made the present, Jeff put together all the information as he and I were sitting down talking, I think what we're saying is, we're not looking for some of the same type of product that's currently being developed in this, in downtown. We want to let that be absorbed. If some, somebody came to us with something unique and different than is currently underway, then certainly I think we would be willing to entertain that idea. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, and I think, I think Jim brought up a good point, or Vice Mayor Duff brought up a good point. You know, we need to figure out what we want to be when we grow up in our downtown area. And, you know, we have a world-class Mesa Art Center, but we don't have a nice steakhouse that you can go to, to eat if you're wanting to go see a play beforehand, right? So i- if you're going to go see a play or a concert or something of that nature, more than likely, you're going to Stapley, or you're going to Riverview to, to have a nice sit-down meal before you come in and, and, and go to the art center to see a play. Or, you know, do we want to cater to the universities that are coming downtown? You know, when my son was at Benedictine, he didn't, I mean, he only slept in the dorms. You know, he spent his time at home, because he's like, Dad, there's nothing to do downtown. I'm bored out of my skull. So he ended up, you know, moving back home, because there was nothing in our downtown that catered to the university students. And so we have to figure out what we're trying to accomplish, and what we're wanting our downtown to be, if we're going to continue to build. Are we going to continue to fill every blank space with residential? Or do we want to encourage, you know, the restaurants and the things that will attract more people to our downtown, whether it's, you know, through university or through the art center, or the convention center? You know, we really need to decide. And again, I think this goes back to what Chris was saying and what Jeff was saying, is letting some of these projects mature a little bit, and then seeing what the market's going to dictate. Because once ASU is downtown, I think it's going to be a game change as far as what type of businesses come downtown. It's, it's, you know, and ASU is going to be geared more towards the graduate student and, and the upper level, you know, junior, senior-type students. And their, their world is a little bit different than the freshman and sophomore-type students. And, and so I, I think we need to allow things to mature a little bit, let some of the private development, private property be bought up and developed, and, and let's see, you know, what happens, and as things mature, and as, as our, as our downtown starts to grow. But I think we really need to figure out what we want to be when we grow up in our downtown. Because right now, I think we're pulling in, in multiple different directions, and there's not a clear, you know, one direction that we would like to go. And so that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any, any additional questions or comments on this? Yes, I'm sorry, but let, let's go, Mr. Freeman.
Thanks, Mayor. Jeff, were any of the properties we discussed, are they eligible for the JIPlet?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes. Well, every property in downtown is eligible for JIPlet, because it is located in a redevelopment area and a central, our single central business district.
Okay, great. Just a couple of comments. Number one, I think we failed to admit, the light rail is an important component of this development, and our goal is, is as we increase the density downtown, we want people from other members of our, or other people from the other communities to utilize the light rail and come and use our downtown restaurants, the Mesa Art Center, libraries, and et cetera. And, and I think, and as listening to my colleagues in the discussion, is, you know, the developers, they do a, a really thorough market analysis and the market conditions. And so they're, they're willing to take the risk on the private property side. And, and I, I encourage and, and agree on both sides that, the city parcel owns, that we move just as fast as we can, or we'll pull back the reins a little bit. But we listen to the market conditions from the developers, and, and we'll move forward with that. And I know that staff and will bring the correct proposals, and the mayor and council at the time will make the correct decision. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, no, we had another hand. Was that but you, Vice Mayor?
Yes, it was. This is a detailed question, Jeff, on slide five, which is city-owned property downtown. There's a couple of stretches I just wanted to clarify that we are an owner, and I just want to expand my knowledge. On Country Club and Main, and Morris, basically, on the north side, that area, which is retail, and I think the court, oh, it has a police station, okay. Maybe I'm, I was looking at it as being on Main Street, and it's on First Street. Never mind. Police station. And now that I have that on First instead of Main, I think I answered my other question. Never mind. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, we did find a couple of properties that we didn't realize we owned as well, and Kim Fallback with her real estate department realized that she's got a nice little sliver along Country Club on the south side that she needs to convert to right away. So this map's been helpful in multiple ways.
Thank you, Council. Other questions or discussion? Mr. McVeigh, Mr. Brady, did you get what you needed from council? I know this is agendized to receive direction. There's a lot of different directions, you know, that I think you may have heard, but I, but I think there was some consensus among the discussion. Our, but I, I don't want to leave staff confused and maybe having not accomplished what you were hoping to accomplish this morning.
Mayor, I, I feel comfortable that, that there's consensus among the council, that our direction is, is appropriate in, in kind of pulling back the reins, but not, not to the extent that we are ignoring potential developments that, that we want to be encouraging, so that we will, we will continue to function as is today. However, we won't be actively marketing or going out to the development community with our properties until we know and can be intentional about it and, and have a, a more public process involved.
And Mayor and Council, I'll just kind of help. I don't think we're pausing anything. We're not slowing anything down. What we're saying with our properties, with current proposals that are coming to us, we're just, at this point, you know, moving forward with, helping support the projects that are underway today. That's our main objective, to keep growing downtown, investing in downtown. And certainly, if there are projects that come to us that are unique and outstanding, that we think would move us in a direction that is important for Mesa downtown in the long term, we certainly would look at those. But I think what we're suggesting today, as far as unsolicited proposals, that unless there's something completely different than what we're already seeing, we're right now not entertaining more of those, but we're going to support the ones that are currently underway. Okay, thank you. I, I think that's fair. And let me just again, express my appreciation to city staff for the way that you have responded to the, to the real huge influx of interest. And Mr. McVeigh and, and his small staff have been working, burning the midnight oil for, for many months, if not years now. And so thank you for the way that staff has responded, but also, Mr. Brady, you and, and previous councils, you know, set the stage for this happening. So I just want to express my appreciation to, to the, those whose, whose shoulders we're standing on right now as we, we experience all this success. It's, it's, it's very gratifying, I'm sure, for a lot of people that have been sitting in this stair, these chairs previously, and certainly for those of us who get to enjoy the fruits of their labors right now.
Mayor, Mayor, I just want to say, it's a very big team. It's not just my small staff. There's a very big team here at the city. Every, almost every department of the city gets involved in every one of these projects. And, and I've caused more headaches across the, across the city than you know, but they, they all are working with us to, to the end goal at the same time. So I want to be able to recognize, you know, all the help that is coming in from all of our departments.
Yeah, amen. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Brady's comment, I think Eco Mesa, Jeff and Mr. Brady will be our first development that incorporates city-owned parking spaces and the development of apartment complexes above. And that will kind of help when we say we don't have enough experience in it. Well, this will be our first one, right? Is what I'm assuming.
Well, actually, the, the grid, if you remember, the grid incorporates the four-story parking structure at Pomeroy. Which one gets out of the ground and finished first?
Which one, which one finishes first, we'll see.
Okay, so it's coming. We've got a race between one and two, the grid and Eco Mesa. Great, thank you.
Okay, Council, moving on. The next item on our agenda, item two B, is to hear a presentation and discuss the city's forecast highlights, including Mesa's financial and economic trends. I guess we saved, you know, a discussion about the city finances until the end of the meeting, because we knew we didn't need much time to talk about this topic. Is that right, Mr. Brady? I'm, I'm being sarcastic. I know you are. We know this is your favorite part. That's why we saved it.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Brian Richel, Assistant Director at the Office of Management and Budget. And alongside of me, I've got Chris Olby, who is the, our Forecast Coordinator in the Office of Management and Budget. So today, we would like to go through, this kind of kicks off the, the budget process with council and city management of presenting the forecast. And this kind of sets the, sets the foundation for moving into the budget and looking at the budget for the next couple of months. And so what I'd like to do is first is we'll go, we'll do the general governmental funds. This includes the, the general fund and the, the Quality of Life Fund. So what we did, similar to the utility funds, we have five principles that we like to follow and to incorporate with our financial policies. And they're very similar to those utility funds, where we have a, we look for a balanced net sources and uses throughout the forecast, and then also a 10% to 15% reserve fund balance over the five-year forecast period. A third one is the sustainability of programs and services. So we like to do throughout that forecast is ensure that we have the sustainability of those programs and services that the city provides. Also, what we like is to keep wages and benefits competitive compared to other valley cities in order to retain and recruit quality staff. And then last but not least, is also investment in capital and lifecycle replacement projects. So with that, keeping those in mind, when we do the financial forecast, we like to use, the city uses current expenditures and revenues, along with the historic trends, to base this forecast and the future expenditures and revenues in multiple years. So I know this last year has been kind of a, a different year. So what we do is we still try to incorporate what has happened in previous years into our forecast. And then with that, with doing a multi-year forecasting, it's, it allows the city and staff to evaluate the, those programs and, programs and services, to make sure that we are sustainable throughout that forecast and be able to keep providing those services. Also, what we do is, any future needs that the city is looking for, either whether it's buildings or lifecycle improvements, repairs and maintenance, we keep those in mind in the plan. And then also, the, the city financial policies calls for the use of ongoing revenues versus ongoing expenditures. And I'll kind of go over some of those differences in the presentation also. But it is so that we don't use one-time, we don't like to use one-time funds for ongoing resources. So moving on to the revenue, the revenue forecast, the, the city subscribes to the, a forecast group out of University of Arizona. And what they do is they get data from the US, but also the, the two metropolitan areas and the statewide of the Tucson area and Phoenix area. And we get that data. And then what we do is we have a financial forecast software that we plug it in. But then what we also do is, we then tailor it to the city of Mesa. We take unemployment, population growth, wages, things like that of Mesa, and then plug those factors in to come up with a revenue forecast. So moving on to the, the next slide, with that revenue forecast, we, the, the two major revenue sources for the city is the city sales tax, and then also the state shared revenues. And if you notice on the, on the graph, 21, what we're doing is And if you notice on the on the graph, 21, what we're doing is there is that hump in 2021. That is primarily based on good growth of sales tax revenue coming in due to online shopping and also shopping local. But also what that is, is we're looking at that as like a some of the one-time stimulus money that was done with the Fed, but then also the unemployment benefits that are one-time benefits and then also any of the utility assistance. So delving a little deeper into the local sales tax, this graph shows a year-over-year comparison of the local sales tax. And if you notice, we brought this graph, I believe, back in November, sometime in the fall. And so it has been updated. The city did have a very good Christmas month in December, and that is due to the online sales, but also a people have been buying recreational vehicles and vehicles themselves, which helps. And so that is one-time purchases that do help. And so if you notice, the the orange line in the beginning of the fiscal year, that is a kind of continuation of previous year, previous fiscal year of when that stimulus money from the Fed came through, but also with the utility assistance and the moratorium on rents and the unemployment benefits. So that that is the reason for that big bump year-over-year between fiscal year 1920 and then the fiscal year 2021. So we want to keep kind of cautious on our future outlook because we're not sure if this is a new trend or if this was artificially an increase, artificial increase due to that stimulus and the feds putting the money into the economy and keeping it going. So this chart shows the local sales tax breakdown by category. And so we've got the retail up at the top. It just shows the dependency of the city's revenues on local retail sales tax. And then you have rentals contracting restaurants and bars and utilities. And if you notice, the the three, the four categories towards the bottom, they've been pretty flat. So restaurants, bars, the hotels, things like that have actually been pretty flat. What's been helping the city is that retail sales tax where people are staying at home, doing home projects. Also, as I said, buying a lot of stuff online. So a lot of people have started buying things online. And that new law that the the state passed on the nexus, or if a if a company is based in Arizona, or if they have a certain amount of revenue that they collect from online sales from Arizona, portions of those sales tax go to the city. So that has definitely helped also. So now, moving on to the other category, that's a major revenue source, is the state shared revenues. And at the top is the the income. So state shared income, which they call urban revenue sharing, but the state shared income. And what I wanted to kind of point out was the the bump that we see in 2021, that is the one-time revenue that we received from that federal tax conformity from when the Bush administration, I mean, the Trump administration did the the tax law change. And so two years later, we were able to receive for the tax conformity of that year, that one-time bump. Now, going down to the next little arrow, this is where the we have a little dip and then a bigger dip. The the first one is, that is due to the the movement from April, April 15 deadline tax filing to our July 15 tax filing. So what that did is, it moved them from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year. So it kind of split. So we received some, we'll receive some money in 21, 22, but then we'll receive the rest of the money in 22, 23. So it kind of, it splits those two fiscal years. And then that the the drop is what we're looking at is the unemployment for this year during the pandemic may hit us in two years. So even though unemployment is is taxable and people are receiving the 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 unemployment benefits and is taxable, however, the the stimulus money that the people have been receiving is not taxable, so we won't receive that. But we are, we are looking to see, to receive some of that unemployment income tax. But it will not, we're not looking that it'll be as much as if we were fully employed. I believe right now, the the city is around seven and a half percent unemployment. So if we were a little lower, we'd probably be receiving a little bit more of that, and we'd be able to bump that up. So putting those graphs to dollars.
Excuse me, Mr. Thompson has a question for you.
Real quick. So if we see the dip in the, if we see the dip in 23, 24, which is that two years out from from the
For the pandemic.
Unemployment.
Yep.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we see a correlation in the retail tax, sales tax in the previous slide? Would we see a correlation or a dip in in the retail, you know, because I would think that if people were on unemployment, they're not going out and buying cars or recreational vehicles and so forth. So would we see that correlation between rentals and sales tax and so forth? Would we see a bigger dip? Or shouldn't we see a bigger dip in that?
So Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, that's a, that's a good point. It's really the timing. So we do have in next fiscal year, we do see, so if we go back to the previous slide in our local sales tax, you see where the height of that bump is in 2021. So next year in 21, 22, when we're looking that the economy will go back to normal, because all of this federal stimulus is still going to be in 2021. So what we're doing is we're that dip is timing to where that is next fiscal year. And so with the unemployment hitting this coming up calendar year, that it's the timing of the urban revenue sharing because the urban revenue sharing we do not receive from the state is for two years out. There's a two-year lag. So when they see it in 21, 22, we'll get it in 22, 23, 23, 24 timeframe. So that's how, that's how that would correlate to it. So going to slide 10 on the the chart, the spreadsheet chart here, putting, as I mentioned, putting the the graphs to dollars. So we are adjusting. So we do have, the middle column is what we're looking at as a projected to end the year as 2021. And as you see down below where the urban revenue sharing, where previous, previous years, we're about 65 million, but then we're up to the 74 million. That is that tax conformity. We were able to receive that those monies, but then we dropped down. And 21, 22 is a known number. So we would be receiving the $68.6 million because that was the the lag I was mentioning. And then also, as to the graph, the local sales tax, in 1920, we received actuals about 160 million. And then we're projecting for 2021 to be about 167 million. And that is due to a lot of that stimulus and unemployment benefits and and the online sales. But then what we're doing is, we forecasted the dip for 21, 22, when all of that stimulus is is run through. And depending on, depending on if the Fed keeps doing these stimulus packages, we would go ahead and revise it. But however, for right now, we are going back to about 160 million. So this would be kind of resetting our base and then growing up, revising, going, growing up in our revenues from there to the 2021. So now looking at the the expenditure forecast. So expenditures, they include the personal services, which is a big part of the the expenditures, and then other services and commodities, and then also capital. So included in this expenditure forecast, primarily in the personal services, the public safety retirement employer contribution is going up from 21, 20, or 2021 to 21, 22. Also, Arizona State Retirement Employer Contribution has gone up in a little about 0.2, almost, I think it's about 0.19%. Medical premiums, they increased as, I think we went back last year, they increased to 4% for calendar year 2021. But premiums are forecasted to increase to 8% in 2022. So that's just the rise in the medical costs and the medical claims and premiums. And then also, it includes our expenditure forecast includes up to a 3% increase for all eligible employees effective the first full pay period in 2021. And that was kind of discussed in last fall when we did the range adjustment and a step increase along with the one-time gross pay here in January. So that, all of our expenditure forecasts include that. So putting that, putting that to numbers here, on the personal services, as you, as you noticed, it does increase. And so the increase between the projected right there in the middle of 2021 and then 21, 22 on the personal services, that is due to 21, 2021 is where we had the CARES funding to where we were able to use that CARES funding for public safety. And that was about for 2021, it was roughly $50 million. So that's why those, those personal expenditures look low compared to the previous year and moving forward. Moving forward, starting with July 1 of the for 21, 22, that is a fully loaded, no federal funding. So that does include the the range adjustment that was made, also the the step increases in January and also in July. So that's why there, it looks like a big difference is this current fiscal year was, the CARES funding did help with that. So now moving on to, this kind of wraps it all together with the revenues and the next slide, revenues and expenditures. So what you see on the left is the total sources call or line, and then also the total uses. So what we'd like to focus is, this starts kind of the foundation of our of the the budget process, is right there in the middle is the forecast for fiscal year 21, 22. So we do have, we're projecting about a 32.3% reserve balance with a positive $43 million net sources and uses. As I mentioned, we were able to use it, when we budgeted, we were about 11 million short at the negative for net sources and uses. But that that CARES funding, about $50 million, helped us come to the positive. But remember, that CARES funding is a one-time funding source for us. So with that, that helped us for this year. And but in forecasting out, as you notice now, we're back to a negative $15.2 million negative net sources and uses. However, we still have a 23, a 28.3% reserve balance. But going on out, we, that negative is still stays there of the net sources and uses. And that is due, that is primarily due to the ongoing expenses of the personal services for retirement increases, but also with the range adjustment and the step increases. And what what we did here too, is to kind of highlight and to show with the our, our financial principles is in orange. So what we're trying to do is, as I mentioned, to keep 10 to 15% of our fund balance. And I know the policy is, the financial policy is 8 to 10, but we like to keep a higher reserve fund balance for the rating agencies and to keep a healthy fund balance. And so I highlighted those in orange, just as a, just as a, an indicator for us that we just, it's a caution that, okay, we are going, we're dipping below that principle. But we have out in the farther years, we have time to adjust and and make those to not be orange. Any, yep?
Excuse me, Brian. Mr. Thompson and Ms. Duff have questions.
I guess I'm a little concerned that as we go through the total sources and total uses, that we're, we're not really getting to a balanced budget. I'm concerned that we're, you know, forecasting 22, 23 to be 18 million over, or, you know, forecast 23, 24 to be 25 million over. How do we, what do we need to do to reduce our spending? Because it seems like our spending is is outpacing our revenues. And so how do we, what can we do other than the, other than the personnel piece? Where are some other areas that we could carve out to reduce some of our, our total uses?
So Mayor, Councilman Thompson, when you said you gave that exclusion except for personnel, that would be very, very difficult because personnel is 70-plus percent of that number. And so frankly, that is exactly what we have to do is manage that personnel cost. Now, remember, this is in the forecast, what Brian and Chris do, which is, is the practice, we fully load up all of those costs, which captures pay increases and both for, especially for public safety, those increases are included in here. And they're included in all the years going out at about 3%. The bigger impact is pension. Pension costs continue to grow. We don't really have, we don't have any real opportunity to regulate that or modify that. So that you saw in this year alone, significant increases in pension costs and public safety. So and then there's healthcare benefit, health, healthcare benefit cost. Those are the biggest drivers in our personnel costs. It's not adding staff. I mean, if it's adding staff and public safety, that's being covered in the
Public safety.
Public safety sales tax. So those are the drivers, and that's where it's difficult for us to manage. Now, again, like I said, we make the assumption it's every position is filled and every position is working during that time. That probably won't happen. And but we, for the sake of budgeting, we include all of that. Now, the reality is too, in some of our departments even today, outside of public safety, they're not at full staffing, right? Because we're not providing the full complement of programming. That won't, we probably won't even look at that, whether it's the libraries, the museums, or the art center, parks and recreation, that probably won't happen until fall. So we just have to watch it. You're, it's a very good point. It's a discussion I have to have oftentimes not very easily with employee groups about the impact of compensation and benefits to the budget. So we have to watch that. Again, this is a planning document, but you found a trend that we're concerned about also, is that net sources and uses. And so every year, we're going to watch that and try to mitigate against that, that difference. But some of that will just come from naturally from vacancies and retirements. It won't make up the whole amount, but it will help modify some of that. And we just have to keep watching that. But that's really where it's at, is just monitoring our personnel services cost.
And Chris, is that, does the total, I'm guessing the total uses also includes capital, correct? I thought, I thought I saw that in there, that
There's, there's only
Vehicles and stuff like that.
Yeah, there you go. Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's keep an eye on it.
Yeah, good. Yes, you got it. And before we leave the general fund, Mayor and Counsel, let me just, because we're going to go into utilities, but let me just say, because I just mentioned something before. Again, this reflects a full budget of operations. We have, as working with departments right now, as I start meeting with the departments, have already started meeting with departments on the budget, the plan today, as far as returning to full programming of all our, you know, existing operations or offerings, probably won't happen till fall. So we're still holding on to many of those vacant positions today. But in the fall, we would look at coming back and we'd probably come back to council as far as what is that timing looks like, as far as when we think that the pandemic will be abated enough that we will be able to bring back most of our programming. So that's one important factor to keep in mind. The other part of this is, there's another big unknown that's going to, that could potentially impact the city's general fund. The governor's tax cuts could have a significant impact to the amount of state share revenue we would receive in the future. We haven't included that, but that's, but it's, you know, if that proceeds, that could have a significant impact on us. On the positive side, if, I know when I drive home every night, there's long lines of people standing outside of the medical marijuana sites. Recreational marijuana is a very popular item these days. And so we're expecting to, we don't know what the expectation is, but we're anticipating there'll be some measurable improvement, maybe in sales tax from that. And then we will know in the months, in the next few months or so, the amount of federal stimulus stimulus that may be coming, not only to our residents, but directly to the city. So all of these are still kind of unknown that we'll have to keep updating council on as we go through this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Vice Mayor Duff had a question, and then Mr. Heredia.
Thank you. I'm backing up a slide on the general governmental expenditures. There's a lot of fluctuation on the capital fund and on, under transfers to the capital fund and to other funds. And so, for instance, on the capital fund, our projected was 16 million, announced 12. This last year is 20. So there's a lot of change there. And to the other funds, we projected for 2021, 91.1 million, and then the following year, we're projecting 41.1. So I was just wondering, especially on the transfer to other funds, what that indicates?
So, no, that's a mayor, Vice Mayor. The transfer, so the capital, it's, it fluctuates. That's a transfer to the capital fund of when we do projects or any life cycle. That can fluctuate up and down depending on if we're able to get those projects finished.
CAD chiller replacement.
Oh yeah, we did the, the chiller replacements. We did some chiller replacements also at the, I think it was AZ Labs chiller replacements. We have some of the, the software upgrades for PD and FIRE, and also we have software upgrades for the, the city itself, that type of projects that where we would go ahead and budget it. However, even though we budgeted, it may not have started or finished in this fiscal year. So we move it on to the next fiscal year. So that, depending on the transfer, so what we do is we transfer from the general fund to the capital fund where the expenditure actually happens. And then depending on how that year goes, the transfer can either go up or down depending on the, the finished projects. So that's for that one. And then to the other funds, the, the transfer for projected is for the ninth, for fiscal year 2021, that I believe is for some of the, the CARES funding offset. So the, the CARES funding, we had, we transferred also, even though we got the $90 million in the, the CARES funding, the general fund also picked up any of the other expenditures that was not, was over and above the CARES funding.
Right. So, so Brian, but to be clear, what shows up as a significant expenditure here, because we used it to cover salaries for public safety, it also came in on the revenue side somewhere else, right? Where, where's the offset to that?
It, it is. The offset is, so the reduction of personal services up top for the public safety sales tax, that reduction is why the, the transfers increased. So what we did is we transferred those expenditures from the general fund over into the CARES fund. So that's why that.
Yeah, we have to, we had to track those dollars to report those to Treasury and to make sure that when our auditors came in, they could see where the dollars were spent and where they came from. So it does make it look, look a little dramatic in our budget, but we've offset the same amount of expenditures that you're seeing coming into the city, if that makes sense. So we essentially had to show all those expenditures for public safety on a separate fund almost, and, and report to the Department of Treasury to show that they were, and we actually had to track, you know, the personnel and their costs, salaries and benefits, and show that. So that's why it looks a little odd here, but at the end of the day, it's the same amount that was budgeted for public safety at the beginning of the year. But because of the, we had to account for the CARES funding, that's why you see this reduction in personal services up above, but the increase to other funds below.
Okay, so, all right. I kind of get it. Because it's noted that, that goes to arts and culture and other funds, as far as the transfer to other funds. So for this year, 2020, 21, 22, we're 50 million less, 55% decrease.
That, yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, so we decreased in 21, 22, do, in that normal, that's the $41 million we're normally about transferring to other funds. So that decrease from the 91 million that's we're projecting to the 41 million, that is due to not transferring those salaries. So those salaries are back up into the personal services for public safety?
Notice how the personal services number escalates from 276 to 353. That's now the 50 million coming back into the public safety budgets, because there's not going to be CARES dollars that we have to offset that with. So it's just, you see, in 21, 2021, that 276 million is actually about $50 million less than where it was at the beginning of the year. Then we received the CARES funding, and the CARES funding required us to show those salaries in a different fund. So in order to attract that, to attract that, we reduced the expenditures in the general fund, transferred the money to the other fund, the CARES fund, to make that reconcile with our reports to Treasury. But now we're starting a new year, we're not going to have $50 million for public safety, so we have to reestablish the budget for personnel services in the general fund in that 353. And then, of course, you see the reduction of the transfer to the other funds, because we won't be making that adjustment without the CARES dollars.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, so, yes, what would happen? So if we had the same situation we did with the CARES, that with this new legislation that may come out, that crosses fiscal years to where we could use expenditures, we could use the new federal stimulus towards those personal services, we would be doing the, the same thing coming up in this coming up fiscal year to where we would track those dollars that are allowable under the new legislation. We would track it in a separate fund. We would decrease the personal services portion of that, and then increase the transfer to be able to transfer those to the funding source. So then you would see, for this coming up fiscal year, when we do the actuals, you would see a decrease in 21, 22 of the personal services, but then a corresponding increase of the transfers to the other funds to offset it.
Okay. Accounting principles. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia, and then I know Mr. Thompson and Mr. Luna have questions as well.
Yeah, on the, on this slide, is this at full, on the personal services, is that full employment across the board, even at the actual, or we had a higher freeze? And so, is that number going to be lower, the 281 or the 276 that we have projected? Because we, we just didn't hire folks this year?
So Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, this is, yes, the projected is our year-end estimate. This takes into account any personal savings, personnel savings. So any of the vacancies that are there, any of the reductions that were done per the reduction exercise, that 276 does include that. However, it could go up or it could go down depending on how the rest of the fiscal year goes. But yes, that, the, so the actual, the projected amount does include those vacancies.
But Councilman Heredia, the forecast number, the 21, 22, that's where we've not, we've assumed a full staffing positions that have may have been frozen.
Sure.
Or whatever. So that, that's the, we've tried to account for that in the projection, but in the forecast, like I, that's what I was trying to explain to council, the forecast for 21, 22, and every year thereafter, we make the assumption those positions are going to be staffed and up and running. Now, again, just, I mean, you all know this, we don't know how many of those programs are going to be up and running in 21, 22, but right now, for the purposes of a forecast, we've assumed all of them will be fully functional, but it really may be delayed. You know, it could be maybe the fall instead of July 1, and maybe it's November 1. That's, that's the difference I wanted to make to council, the subtlety in these numbers.
Sure. Okay, perfect. And then my second question is around some of the unknowns that you mentioned, Chris, around tax dollars that come into the city. I know in the previous discussion around internet sales tax, we were just not sure of trends of that. Do we have a better handle of what internet sales tax our city is looking for, looking at in the next, you know, couple of years?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, it's a great question. I think the challenge we have, and I've, I've talked to other city managers, is about the same time that the law, the Wayfair decision and the state allowed for the collection of those online sales tax was about the same time we were going through this pandemic, and we were seeing these kind of changes in consumer behavior. So we, we associated some of that, obviously, with the fact that we could capture the sales tax on, online. But we also recognize more people were just staying home and purchasing from home and not going to the mall. So what we haven't really been able to parse out in a normal, whatever a normal year is going forward, how, what that's going to look like. We do think it is obviously beneficial to the city, and that's why I think we're hedging our, you can hedging our forecast just a little bit for the next six months, because we want to see what, and I don't even know if we can say what we're doing right now is normal, but you know, for the next six months, how much different is it going to look than last year's six months? And so I think we'll have a better idea to your que, we don't know the answer to your question. We know it's certainly been helpful. We just don't know how to separate that from behavior, purchasing behavior that's different without a pandemic, if that makes sense. You know what I'm saying? I think we're, we don't know what, what returning to life after a pandemic looks like versus the difference that's happening in the online sales. So hopefully, in the next six to nine months, we'll start seeing some of that normalize, and we'll be able to have a better answer for you.
Okay. Hey, just curious, what was the, the current amounts that we're seeing for those online sales that come into, to, to the city?
So what we're looking at is, so we were able to compare a few, a few months, and we are seeing about a, a few hundred thousand dollar increase. So we were usually about $500,000 a month. Now we're seeing about $700,000 to $800,000 a month on the online sales. So, but as I mentioned, it's, it's really early in, in the, the law, in being able to forecast a trend of that. But then also, as City Manager Brady indicated, is that, is this trend the new trend, or is it due to the pandemic to where everybody is staying at home? And once every, once people start getting vaccinated and things start opening up and they're feeling more comfortable going out, will that trend then change to the old behavior instead of staying home and purchasing online? So we are, we have seen a, a decent increase in our online sales, which has helped. But as City Manager indicated, I think it's still too early to tell if this is a new trend moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Chris, without opening Pandora's box, transit funding, is that, is that a fixed cost, or does that fluctuate based on ridership? What, what, what all is, what all consists of the transit fund and the, the transfer to?
Yeah. So there are formulas that are determined by, you know, every mile of light rail that you have in your community, how much that gets allocated to all the cities. So that is driven, to your point, by their operational costs and, and maybe replacement of some of the equipment. Although some of the, a lot of the, you know, train, the cars itself get funded by the region. I think what's good news for us, at least for the next couple of years, that there has been significant amount of federal dollars that have come to the Transit Authority. And as a result, that has, that's having, at least for the next, I think, year or two, is going to help offset quite a bit of our cost related to transit. So, which helps because obviously, the numbers, the ridership on transit has been significantly lower, and as a result, we don't collect nearly as much at the fare box. But we are pleased to see that the Transit Authority has been working with the member cities that have light rail and applying the federal dollars they've been receiving that will help offset some of our costs, at least for the next year. Anyway, so that's, I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, it, it does. Is that, is that number, that reduction because of the federal funding, is that part of why that transfer to other funds we're seeing is, is down?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, that is correct. So when we received, when the city received, I believe it was roughly $12 million of the federal funding this fiscal year, what that did is it did reduce, the transit fund did get it, and it reduced the transfer from the general fund to the transit fund. And also, with this last one that was approved in December, they also received more federal funding, not as much. I believe it was around $5 million. That is going into the transit fund, that will be going into the transit fund, and will reduce the transfer to the transit fund also to help out the general fund.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. I, I will, I need to let Mr. Brady know, this is my eighth budget forecast presentation.
You, you're giving it this year. Dave, you're giving it this year.
This is my eighth one. So, you know, things always work out at the end, because we do have a great department, your leadership, Mr. Brady, as well as our, our Office of Budget. Things always work out. So my question was similar to what Mr. Heredia asked. You know, during the, during the pandemic crisis, we did furlough a number of employees. And, and it appears that the forecast includes those employees that were furloughed or laid off. They'll be coming back. Hopefully, we'll be able to ramp up our, especially Arts and Culture Department, back to what they were norm, at, at a normal, at a normal time. So it looks like the budget forecast does include a full ramp up. Is that correct?
So, yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Luna, so the assumption, again, as I said, is right now, what, what we've done from a budgetary standpoint is we assumed all positions that are currently authorized will be filled beginning July 1. Now, realistically, we believe that we probably won't be programming and opening up all our programming across the city, whether it's the performing arts, or whether it's even all our activities inside our community centers and parks. But we, we are optimistic that once we get through the summer, we believe, what we're hoping for in more planning with the departments, and we'll have more discussions with them, is that come November timeframe, we're hoping to come to council, maybe in fall, and talk about, hopefully, be in a position to start having a lot of those programming openings. So for budgetary standpoint, the money will be there. So we'll have the positions, we'll be able to continue to fill positions that have been frozen, or as you said, maybe someone that's been, if it's laid off, whatever it might be, we'll be able to bring those positions back. That's the plan for now, sometime in fall.
Thank you. Council, additional questions on this topic? All right, Mr. Brady, I, my impression is this is just informational to kind of kick off the budget process, is that you don't, do you need anything additional from council on this topic?
Well, Mayor, I know that we, we kind of interrupted and stopped at general fund. We still, now I understand we've been doing this for some time. Here's a, here's a thought. We could continue and complete through the utility fund. We also have one more presentation that was scheduled for today with not on long-term planning. But maybe we're kind of to the point where maybe what I would recommend is we could pick off from where we are right now and just meet a little bit early on Monday before the council meeting, maybe starting at 5 o'clock, and complete this presentation and do none of this presentation, or we can just keep going. I mean, we're, we're here all day, Mayor, so you let us know what the pleasure of the council is. My, my, my thought was, and let me throw it out there in council, I, I totally defer to the pleasure of the council on this, but I was, I was going to suggest we take a five-minute break to stretch our legs, and then come back and hear the last agenda item. But, so maybe, Mr. Brady, we could do a hybrid of what you're suggesting, and meet a little early on Monday to, to get the rest of the budget presentation, but take a break now and then come back and, and hear about the planning, the vision's plan. Yeah, I mean, we're perfectly fine of deferring this till Monday, if that's the pleasure, council. We know it's just, it's, it's a long Zoom meeting, so we're, but we, we can keep going, whatever the council wants us to do.
I like that, I, I like that idea, Mayor.
Ms. Phil Berry?
I, I'm a little worried that Monday night might already be a really long meeting.
That's true.
Well, we would start to, we would do this before. We'd start at 5. I don't know if that-
Right, but so we would just-
Right, but so we would just be sitting even longer. I'm just saying that we're going to go quite late Monday night is what my expectation is, so.
Mr. Brady, can, can one of these, either the balance of this presentation or the Planning Division's presentation, would it, would it cause any problems if we bumped it to next Thursday?
Not, well, we can't do it on the 4th, that's our strategic planning session, but we could move it to March 11th. So if you want, we could move all this to March 11th.
Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that I'm going to have a lot of questions on the planning and zoning piece that, that Nana's going to be presenting. I think it's important for, for our community to, and for us to understand what's going on with the general plan and what he's proposing. I honestly, I would prefer to hear that today versus putting it off till the, till the 11th. Again, like you, I'll defer to my colleagues, but I, I'm sure, just looking at, you know, going through the presentation last night, looking at it, I'm sure I'm going to have a lot of questions and comments on that piece.
I agree with you. I think that, that's a critical presentation. That's why I'm wondering if it might not be better to defer it, because we've already been going for two and a half hours now. It might be best to take it up fresh, you know, at a, unless there's something timely, you know, it's something urgent that, that is a pressing issue that needs to be resolved. There's, there's-
Mayor, I prefer delaying until May 11th, I mean, March 11th, not May 11th, sorry, March 11th. That way we can, we'll be fresh and Nana can focus on his presentation on, on us, present it, and we'll be fresh in mind and we could be the first thing on the agenda, if that's possible.
We'll find a-
I know you had your hand up.
My only comment is on Nana's presentation, since it is significant, I wanted to ask council, is there any consideration of wanting to hear that before we do strategic planning on the 4th? And I don't care whatever schedule works, whether today, Monday is fine, if you want to go the 11th is fine, but I know it is significant for us and if you think that information would be beneficial, I'll let others make that decision.
Great question. Mr. Brady and Nana, is there any amount of urgency on that? Would it be beneficial to hear Nana's presentation sooner than later?
Well, Mayor, certainly, I mean, that, I think Councilman Duff brings a very good point. Is it absolutely required before the strategic planning? I wouldn't say that, but it certainly would benefit maybe council, because I think what it does is begin to kind of help you think beyond just what's in front of you next week or the next planning step, or the planning and zoning meeting, but it, it is a broader look about some issues we're going to have to face in the future. But again, that's either we have to do that, continue to do that today, or we have to start earlier on March 1st.
Okay, let me, just for purposes of having something to criticize, let me suggest that we pause Brian's presentation where it is now. We're going to be talking about budget for the next few months.
That's fine.
So I don't think that it's, it's critical that we get the, and, and frankly, I, the only thing I was going to add to this conversation is that I spoke with one of our U.S. senators yesterday about the likelihood of us getting additional COVID relief money. And I, I'd like to update you on that. I think that there's a very real possibility we're going to see another $90 million check from the federal government. And, and I know that might add a wrinkle, you know, Brian might have a different presentation if, if that happens. So I'm, for purposes of criticism, I'll, I'll suggest that we take a five-minute break now, we, we pause Brian's presentation, invite him to come back at a future Thursday morning meeting, and then we plow ahead and, and hear Nana's presentation. Council, is that sound okay? I'm seeing some, some thumbs up and some nodded, nodded heads. So Brian, thank you. We're looking forward to getting the rest of this presentation, but for now, I'm going to call a five-minute recess. By my watch, it's 9:45. Actually, let's do 10 minutes. At 9:55, let's, let's be back in front of our Zoom cameras and we'll hear from the Planning Department. Does that work for you, Mr. Brady?
Yes, sir, that'll work out great. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the recess and for reconvening. Mr. Brady, let, let's go ahead and, and at this point here, Agenda Item 2C, which is to hear a presentation and discuss the Planning Division's work plan, including a list of major land use planning strategies and goals for 2021 and into the future.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Nana and Rachel here to make the presentation.
Mayor, Council, good morning again. I do have Rachel, who is Senior Planner, or one of the Senior Planners here to give this presentation. And the goal for this presentation is we want to discuss all the current major activities that are happening in the city in terms of development, as you started earlier on with the discussion even with Jeff. We are seeing a lot, a lot of development activities happening all over, so we want to give you an update and kind of give you the, my idea of all the things that we're doing currently. But as you know, we also don't want to be stuck in the current. We want to make sure that we continue to work to really come up with strategies of improving or continuously improving our urban form and discuss some of the strategies that we have in place already and how we are evaluating them to see effectiveness of those strategies and then also coming up with some of the new strategies that we'll be looking forward to in working with the council in the coming months and years ahead. So as you know, the Planning Division basically have their three major primary functions. One is long-range planning, and the long-range planning basically deals with us forecasting and predicting how we want our city to grow, the urban form strategies that we really put us in a place to really achieve a certain goal for the city. And one of the major tools of implementing that is the general plan. As you know, we do, we did approve the large general plan in 2014 and Rachel will discuss more. There is one update coming up, which is a major update. Another major function of the Planning Division is to make sure that every development proposal or land use policies actually is consistent with the policies of the city, the city council, and also conforms with our zoning ordinance, which is one of the major implementation tools that we use to ensure the goals of land use policies are achieved. And we also deal a lot with preserving and protecting our historic access, so historic properties, cultural assets. One of the functions, again, of the Planning Division is historic preservation. And in a broader spectrum, one of the things we do is also making policy recommendations for land use policies and improving the urban form to the city council and then other boards that we serve as well. So with that, I'll go into just give you a brief idea of current activities that are, that is going on. We have been very busy, as you can see when you drive around Mesa. As of last year, the data that is shown on the board, right, as you can see in the presentation, we continue to see high volume of development applications, which is good, it's really kept us busy, the city administration and I think all of you busy as well. If you look at the chart here, starting the first cutoff last year, we did have 213 applications. This is initial applications, as some of them came to the council, some were also approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. And as you look, we continue to see that high volume throughout the whole year and even beginning of this year, January, February, the volumes continue to be higher. One of the functions we also do is we respond to customer inquiries, the inquiry from residents of development community. That number continued to be extremely high. This is in addition to all the functions that we perform. As you can see, the, we do have about 39 inquiries a day. And example, in September, when we were in the middle of the pandemic, we were answering about 748 inquiries a day. So that's extremely high volume that we need to keep up with as well. And one of the, as you know, one of our functions is also building permits, which is basically administered by John, who is our building official. But most of the functions in the building permit also intertwined with planning and all the divisions within Development Services. We continue to see extremely high volume of building permits, as you can see here. Just last year alone, for single residents, we did review 1,945. For commercial permits, last year alone, we did review 1,322. And talking to John last week, as, last week alone, we did receive about 400 building permits. So we continue to be extremely busy. I think Christine is having very much fun with all this high volume of applications.
Excuse me, Nana, Vice Mayor Duff has a question.
Sorry to interrupt. I know you have a long presentation. Quick question, though. On multifamily building permits, does that, where does that fit in? Is that under commercial?
I, I believe it's under commercial, yes, in this presentation, yes.
Okay, we'll talk later. I'd be interested to know what that number is. Thank you.
And I think John is also on the call as well. But this, we, if there is no indication we're going to slow down. So as you look at some of the major land use decisions that council has made or did make in the past years, we have Eastmark Cadence and Avalon Community Plans, those continue to be developed and there is so enough volume out there. You also did approve Destination Gateway, which compose, consists of two parts. There is a residential component and there is a commercial component for the car dealership that is also in the pipeline about to be happening. We continue to see significant commercial and industrial development, especially in southeast. We've been very busy. Phoenix Mesa Gateway, as you know, is also expanding and all the, the development that are going to be happening is also about to be coming through. Horse Crossing, which was also approved last year, is actually beginning to take shape. The entitlement processes is beginning to come through. And then you have Landing 202, which is a major industrial development going on in southeast. And then Site 17, so in addition to Site 17, that I think Jeff mentioned that he's going to be coming before council, all the downtown projects that you saw actually comes through the Planning Division, either in the form of form-based code review or in the form of entitlements. So all of it comes through us for review, working directly with Jeff as well. Falcon Field is also beginning to expand as well, so all those are going to be coming. The purpose to show you this is just to know that this is our daily functions or activities, but we also want to make sure that we just don't focus on the current. So the next set of presentation that we're going to go through is basically to discuss some of the strategies that will put us in a place to be proactive and not just being reactionary and also continue to find strategies to really encourage development, but also basically ensure that our urban form continue to improve. So with that, I'll pass on to Rachel for the next set of presentations.
Thank you, Nana. Good morning, Mayor, Council. So as Nana was describing, a lot of what he was describing is the day-to-day activities of the Planning Division, and that really is reacting to the development and the growth that we see coming into the city right now. In addition to that, you're aware that we're processing and drafting many text amendments and other policy documents to really help strengthen our zoning tools, to react to changing trends and to better implement the general plan and the city's goals and objectives. But in addition to that, the Planning Division is also responsible for guiding the long-range planning for the city. So with that, what I'll be describing are some of the strategies and the actions that we want to pursue in the next few years to kind of shape the urban form. So for the first one, the general plan, we, we've spoken to you a lot this last year about the importance of the general plan as that overarching policy document that guides the future actions of the city. So this document is required to be updated every 10 years. We're approaching that in 2024. So not only does it need to be adopted by city council by 2024, but it also has to be ratified and approved by the voters by that time. So as you can imagine, this is going to be a, a large effort that's going to involve significant citizen participation, coordination with other departments and other public entities. And in addition to the general plan itself, there are several of the other sub-elements of the plan, such as the transportation master plan and the balanced housing plan, that are also scheduled to be updated around the same time. So with that big effort, that's going to kick off probably this year, the planning for that effort and the meat of that work will occur in the next two years. So in addition to the general plan, we also have six sub-area plans in the city, and the last of those was adopted in 2012. We see the need that it's really time to reevaluate those existing sub-area plans to identify what has been successful and areas that need to be adjusted. So while the general plan provides a broad policies for the city, these sub-areas, they're smaller geographies that share common characteristics but are unique from the rest of the city. And what sub-area planning allows us to do is it allows citizens to create a common vision and kind of goals for those areas. So we know there are several other areas around the city that kind of meet this qualification of having, you know, shared characteristic, shared characteristic yet are distinct. So we are going to be exploring, identifying those locations and creating new plans for those areas to really build upon their uniqueness and their sense of place. And with that, one of the tools that we are looking at utilizing is overlay zoning. So just a kind of background for per-state statute for zoning, development standards for a zoning district have to be applied consistently across the city, no matter where it's located. So if you have an RS 15 zoned property in northeast Mesa, it has to be applied the same as, as same RS 15 property on the west side of Mesa, even though they may have, you know, very distinct characters in those areas and conditions. So what the overlay zoning would allow us to do is to add another layer of standards onto that to make them distinct and special for certain areas. So that's just another way of enhancing that sense of place. So the next strategy we have are corridor plans. And similar to the sub-area plans, these are smaller geographies, but they're often, you know, linear areas. So they can be transportation corridors, they could be canals, but they could also be view corridors. So we'll be identifying corridors that are ripe for redevelopment, such as East Main Street, but we also need to be proactive and to identify corridors that are need of future planning. And with these plans, what we'll be doing is we'll be encouraging pedestrian connectivity to neighborhoods, open space and to other key destinations. But we'll also be evaluating the adjacent land uses and the development standards to make sure that those are appropriate and that those are supporting the goals and the vision for those areas. And then in addition to that, we also want to look at the, the potential of using these corridors for amenities and their utilization for alternative modes of transportation. The next few strategies are largely place-making and have to do with the urban form. So one of the main elements of the 2040 general plan was a goal to create a sense of place within Mesa. So the other strategies that I've been talking about so far, far do that by breaking up the city into smaller geographies and addressing their uniqueness. With this, these are more action-oriented strategies that try to look at the urban form. So the first one of these would be entryway signage, in which we would identify key locations and development standards for monument signs when you're entering into the city. And these will act as, you know, gateway signifying that you've entered in Mesa and that you've crossed those jurisdictional boundaries. With the wayfinding system, once again, identifying those corridors, identifying development standards for wayfinding signage that would direct and orient people to the key destinations within Mesa. And then finally, with the streetscape design guidelines, these would be specific standards which have unique plant palettes, specimen trees and site furnishings for different areas of the city. And this once again really plays off of the idea of sub-area plans and creating a unique sense of place in order to create a different identity for the different areas. And lastly, we have revitalization strategies. So currently, the city has four redevelopment plans and areas. So we want to work closely with economic development to see how we can strengthen those implementation tools. But we also want to identify other strategies such as adaptive reuse and infill standards to see how we can better revitalize deserted malls, vacant shopping centers and blighted strip malls. So how we plan to accomplish that moving forward is we kind of have a phased approach where we have several items that we're working on currently. Several of those are text amendments- where we have several items that we're working on currently. Several of those are text amendments. We'll actually be coming to March 18th to be discussing recreational marijuana and community residences. But we are also underway of drafting some subdivision regulation amendments and some amendments to the leisure and recreation district standards. We are also in the process of drafting infill development design guidelines. So those include adaptive reuse and other infill strategies. And then small lot development guidelines are similar to the quality development guidelines that were adopted a couple of years ago, but these are specific to residential small lot developments. And then lastly, our historic preservation office is currently in the process of creating their own design guidelines and amendments to the historic preservation ordinance. And then as we look to kind of the near future, as I mentioned earlier, the planning for the 10-year general plan update will really start kicking off this year. We'll start conducting some of those sub-area plans in conjunction with that effort and also start exploring the placemaking strategies that I mentioned, such as the wayfinding plans and the streetscape design guidelines. We've also had some interest and inquiries about exploring an overlay zone for the Lehigh area, so we will also be looking to work on And then looking at the midterm, which we really see is the next two to five years moving out, this is where the majority of the work is going to be done on the general plan update. This is when we will start looking at doing corridor plans, identifying those new sub-area plans, working on our revitalization plans and strategies, and then once again, exploring other potential overlay districts, which could be, you know, other areas, other sub-areas, including downtown. So that was the quick, quick explanation of what we are looking for in the next couple of years. So we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. There's a lot to discuss. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I love talking about planning and zoning. And Nana, you and I have had this conversation a few times. And when we get into sub-area planning, I think as a city, you know, we're doing good, but I think we have to do better. And what I mean by that is, you know, when I look at Cadence and I look at Eastmark, those two specific developments, the developers and their broker teams are going out and picking the low-hanging fruit. And we're ending up with McDonald's and Burger Kings and Jack in the Boxes on every single corner and every single development. And to me, those aren't the things that build character within our community. You know, Eastmark and Cadence, the residents are starving for a sit-down type restaurants, to the point to where we're bleeding revenue into Queen Creek and into Gilbert by the millions of dollars a year because we don't have those amenities here. People are absolutely tired of fast food, but our zoning allows them, as long as it fits, to be there. And we need to have some type of trigger to where, you know, when you look at Gilbert and you look at what's going on in Cooley Station, the really cool concepts that they're bringing in there, the really nice restaurants that they're bringing in there, the office mixed-use that they're bringing in there. And then we go to Eastmark and Cadence and they're like, well, nobody's really interested in being here. And I'm not buying into that. And I think we have to do a better job of holding developers feet to the fire. I, you know, Eastmark honestly has been an embarrassment on their latest development at Signal Buttes and Point 22. Great opportunity to have a retail area that builds character into the community and provides the amenities for the community. But instead, they have a Safeway, a storage facility, an Autozone, and a bank, and a Starbucks. They messed the boat. There could have been restaurants that serve, you know, the community. There could have been entertainment venues that served the community. And you've got 8,000 people that live around the Bella Villa, Eastmark, Cadence area, you know, in that entire area. And the last thing they need is another Burger King. It's an embarrassment to, I think, to Mesa that we allow developers just to bring in the low-hanging fruit, and we're not pushing them to bring quality development that builds character into our communities. And I would love to see us tighten that up on the sub-area planning and really push back against the developers and say, you know what, we expect more. We expect better in our communities than what you're currently bringing into our community. And so, Nana, I know you're doing a phenomenal job trying to help me convey that message, but anything that we can do, you know, to really tighten up our sub-area planning and get that message out that, look, we're done with mediocrity. Our expectation is going to be quality and better venues for our citizens.
Thank you. Council, other comments or questions? Mr. Luna?
Yes, I like the notion that we're working with economic development as we move towards the signage and creating these designations. I know it's really worked well with the Falcon District. And I don't know, and even in North Mesa, you can see the signage of Falcon District, and it really, really points out to that district. And I think the intention originally was also to promote economic development activities to, I remember when we worked on the strategic plan for the Falcon area, we really wanted to be intentional in terms of the kind of businesses we wanted in that area. But, so, maybe you can describe that relationship you have with economic development in segmenting these sub-areas to specific districts?
Mayor Council, we do have a very good working relationship with economic development. And I think this, my answer here probably will answer both questions. Councilmember Luna, your question, and Councilmember Thompson's question. The good thing is, whenever we have a development application proposal, we review it very much closely with economic development, but not even only current applications. As we talk about some of the strategies and specific areas in the city, we are working with economic development to look at the trends, trade capture areas, and the ability for certain resources that will lead to some of the things that we're thinking about. So I'm constantly in communication with Bill, Laurie, trying to find strategies to continue to improve our airbound form and strategies of planning in the city.
And Nana, you know, to Councilmember Thompson's point, what can we do to encourage? I mean, I would love to have more nice, fine restaurants in northeast Mesa. And fortunately, we do have a few, which is very exciting. But do we have leverage in trying to encourage these developers to work towards that goal?
This is where economic development is continuously working with the development community to encourage them and look for opportunities to exploit. So with the Eastmark and Cadence, I know we continue to talk to them. As we even get requests from the community of their desired services, we continue to work. But one of the things we also need to be mindful of is if the zoning allows for it, it becomes very difficult. So as we continue to look at the trends changing, it gives us an opportunity to make certain adjustments that will really lead us to where we want to be.
Thank you, Nana.
Thank you, Mr. Arretia. And then Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, really interested to see further conversation developments around the infill and redapt, reuse aspects of how we make things either for developers or folks that own properties to, you know, make sure, you know, they're able to bring about quality to their sites. I think that's something that, of course, on the west side, we represent, you know, we don't have the land for new build, but the opportunity for redapt, reuse, and infill is there. So, you know, furthering, providing the opportunity for folks to utilize some further tools to make, to ensure that they are thinking about how they can do these projects here. We've seen some recent successes here on the west side, but would like to see a little bit more in those details. I know that it was part of your conversations, your presentation, that it's coming up as far as some strategies. But anything that we can do to encourage those types of improvements, I think that, for me at least, in the west side, would be beneficial to keep momentum going on our side of town.
Mayor, Councilmember Arretia, that's actually a good point. And I know it has been a goal of the council to see redevelopment happening in those areas. That's why you have the four redevelopment area plans that we continue to work to implement, that we are working closely with economic development to be more proactive and really provide every opportunity for those plans to come into fruition. One of the things we will be bringing before you also in the coming months, or at least before the end of the year, is adaptive reuse. And our goal for the adaptive reuse is basically do everything possible to remove barriers to basically helping to redevelop those areas. So that has been a project that has been going on for a while, and we are looking forward to actually completing that in the coming months.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And then Vice Mayor Duff?
Thank you, Mayor. Nana, I just, listening to the presentation, I appreciate you doing this, both of you. Is there a way that we can blend the historic guidelines into the zoning overlays? Is that something you're considering? I didn't, I just wanted to make sure, are you separating the two, or can you bring the two together to help? Like in my district, and I've got the Evergreen District, Lehigh Sub Area, is, are there ways that we can, how do we put it together? I'm going to stop there.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so what we're looking into, there are two things when it comes to the historic district. We're looking for design guidelines, which is more of recommendation, to really encourage redevelopments in those areas to follow those guidelines. And then we do have the zoning ordinance. That's very regulatory. And so those have certain basic standards that needs to be met. However, the design guidelines and the zoning ordinance kind of go hand in hand. So there is kind of cohesiveness between the two. And I know what you're talking about when you talk about Lehigh. So one of the things we've been talking to you about, and also with some of the residents in Lehigh, is to looking into possibility of having a heritage district. As you know, we've had, we do have heritage district. Those are areas that may not be able to meet the absolute criteria for historic district designation, but we also want to encourage the preservation of those history, the history in those areas. So the zoning ordinance, yes, but because it's so regulatory, we always encourage the guidelines, which provide a little bit of discretion, but also help us to really work strongly with the community for them to follow that guidelines as well.
Yeah, I was just thinking, when you were talking, who better, who best knows their neighborhoods, except, you know, those that are involved in their communities and our sub-area plans or the historic districts? The thing I was thinking about is, I know that I've been pushing for the neighborhood village concept for certain infill projects, and they're, some of them are kind of large. Maybe is this the neighborhood village concepts, are they part of this, something that we can incorporate and help us understand better?
Mayor Council, so the neighborhood concept is actually in the general plan. And as you know, the general plan is the overarching policy guidance for any development that comes into it. So one of the things council did last December, the neighborhood village wasn't, it could, well, it needed a little bit of clarification and well-definition. So last December, when you approved minor, well, a few changes to the general plan, that was one of the things you did to clearly define the neighborhood village concept so we can actually be more frank and more upfront as to what you're looking for when you talk about neighborhood village. And we've just seen one project coming forward so far, the Councilmember Freeman, that's in your district, and that has really helped us in our communication with the development community of exactly what it needs to be. We're still working with them to review it, but it's provided clear direction of what it needs to be.
Great. Thank you for your comments and support. I'm through, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, other comments or questions on this agenda item? Vice Mayor Duff?
Yes, thank you. A few things regarding infill and small lot development and such. Is there a way to scale our permitting fees according to the size of the development? Does that help? Is that something we could employ, or is this a thought I have on that?
Mayor, Vice Duff, I believe they, I mean, it's based on square footage, it's based on lot size. So I think that's already built into our permitting system.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Another point I'd like to make on the village concept is one that I've brought up to Nana before called the 15-minute city. And since we're just such a large city, having a 15-minute city is not doable. So we look at maybe 15-minute villages or 15-minute areas, and these designated areas part of our city, where we, on foot or bike, you can reach everything that you need in order to function in life. You have your shopping and your retail and employment and parks and all the amenities without having to get in your car that you can access within 15 minutes of your home if you chose to walk or bike. This leads to a richer quality of life and also has less impact on our CO2 emissions. And also leans towards more human-scale development, development that is made for people to enjoy the surroundings than to transport cars. Also, along those lines, looking at our planning with the sustainability mind on how we make plans on our developments with developers in our city and how it's integrated. So a few things that I think are important is we've had the hottest and driest, one of the hottest and driest years on record, and it will only continue. I think we should look at, we have water issues, which I know is a different department, but on planning, we can address the heat through the use of shade, through trees and shade structures, and trying to lower our temperatures by having shade in our developments and encourage it in the neighborhoods. I'd like to see something on the heat mitigation. There's a lot of issues around that and studies on it. Incentives for green materials, can we do anything in our planning department around that in encouraging developers to choose green building materials? Electric car charging stations, we mentioned in the OPUS development. Can we implement, especially on multifamily, some kind of minimum requirement for electric cars charging stations? If we have a single-family home, we can plug in, and if we have that car, it's no problem. But if you're in a multifamily environment and you have an electric car, charging it can be an issue. So I would like to see some minimum requirements, especially as we see the car manufacturers making commitments to have completely electric fleets by 2035, which is just around the corner. We need to plan for that as we go forward. Regarding housing, certainly we need to look at affordable housing and making sure that those plans are integrated with our transportation and correlated so that we can reduce the cost of housing by simply making sure we have good transportation plans involved. I've talked about ADUs a number of times. Certainly, I would like to visit that where appropriate for homeowners and have them be allowed to rent an accessory dwelling unit on their property. And we could have packaged- And we could have packaged plans with fast-track permitting, something to make it more affordable to increase our need for affordable housing that's integrated in our neighborhoods and doesn't have a huge impact on them. And a consideration for maybe upzoning by right for our properties to increase those densities to address affordable housing. We have to look at ways to have a natural way to provide affordable housing, other than just looking at who's going to come in with huge tax credits and create these developments. So I like to look at what we can do within what we already have to provide those opportunities. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Council, other questions or comments? Okay. I'm sorry, did I see a finger? Nope. Okay. Thank you. I think that this is, again, agendized to hear a presentation and discuss, so I think you got a good endorsement. It's a very ambitious job assignment that you guys have. So I know, again, we're talking about work that you're going to be doing over the next, you know, years, so, but everything I saw, and I think I'm speaking for the council as well, I endorse and we agree with and anxious to play a role in providing direction on those things. So, thank you. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Duff?
May I add to the planning department? I love what Nana and his planning department is doing and the strategies that they're looking at. I think it's something that we've needed for a while, and I'm so glad that they're taking it on, and I can't say enough of good things about the entire department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and amen. Okay, if there's nothing else under that agenda item, the next item on our agenda is to hear current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, who would like to begin? Let's go with Mr. Luna, then Mr. Freeman.
Hi, Mayor. Let me see, let me get to it. Let's see, last week I was, I'm sorry, this past Tuesday, it was part of, part one of the NLC constituency presidents' flying, so we met with our fellow presidents throughout the United States through NLC. And so we're going to continue the meeting today. So it was a long meeting, I think it was three hours, so we'll continue that as well today. Yesterday, the 24th, I was featured in a filming of the Naleo Education Fund webinar, Prepare, Preserve, and Protects with Small Businesses and COVID-19 Recovery. So we had a number of representatives on the panel, Stanford Latino Entrepreneur Initiative and the National Association of Latino Community Asset Builders. So that will be shown during the NLC conference at the HELO meeting on March 7th, and then, of course, March 9th for the entire membership. Today, I will be attending the National League of Cities Board of Directors. We have a meeting today at 1:00, and if you have an opportunity, the Mexican Council has created a newsletter, and we were fortunate to be represented through MAG. As you know, MAG has had the Adison Bination Relations Committee, and I've been very active in that group, and we were featured through MAG. And also, I wanted to, let me see, just to alert our community, if you live in the Red Mountain area, we are going to have a live virtual public meeting today on the Red Mountain Park improvements. Please, if you're interested in going and attend the webinar, please go to the City of Mesa Engineering page, and there you can register to attend the meeting. That's it, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out, this week is National FFA Week through the United States, but more importantly, Mesa has a lot of FFA programs that teaches youth about Future Farmers of America, in case you want to know what FFA is like, and I was a member of that. So, yeah, it's our Mesa Public Schools. I know Westwood is heavily involved, and I know Red Mountain and Dobson have had FFA programs, so I appreciate them. Also, gosh, spring training games are about to hit. I just wanted to make a mention of that, so I'm excited for that to happen in District 1, and hopefully, I know things are all set for all the precautions and necessary things so that fans can have a great experience at our spring training facilities, and we appreciate them coming to Mesa. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Vice Mayor Duff?
Yes, thank you. And Mark, before I talk about what I've been up to, I think the Mesa Historical Museum has an exhibit opening up called Play Ball, is that it? About the spring training? I think it's coming up March 6th.
Yeah, I don't know the exact dates, but we can find out for sure.
It's coming up. I'm really looking forward to it. So that'll be nice in conjunction with the spring training, to be able to do those at the same time. I'd like to contribute that last night I attended a RAIL community meeting in which our Transportation Director, RJ Zeder, presented a Mesa Moves Active Transportation Bond Update and encouraged everyone to complete the bike pedestrian survey in preparation for identifying the 2020 bond projects. The group expressed a strong need to complete our bike paths from a transportation commuter perspective, more so prioritizing that over our recreational uses for bike paths. So the survey is on the City of Mesa Bike and Pedestrian Program Facebook page, and it's available in English and Spanish, is ongoing through March 7th, so I encourage everybody to take it. It only takes a few minutes, and it will contribute to the project selection for our 2020 Bike Ped program. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Aradia?
Yeah, just a quick shout out. This, earlier this week, we attended a mayor and several different department heads, the 42nd Annual adoption Ranch H.O.A. Breakfast. So want to give a shout out to adoption ranch community and their stellar breakfasts that they have every year, and I really appreciate their support and work in creating a really great community there, adoption ranch. And also want to give a shout out to the community outreach team. I attended a meeting earlier this week as well, where they had a panel of neighborhood leaders talking about best strategies, how to get people engaged and involved in the process of engaging their neighbors to work on neighborhood projects and others. So shout out to the neighborhood outreach group there.
Thank you, Mr. Aradia. Councilmember Spilsbury?
I love hearing what everyone's up to. Just a reminder that Tuesday is Read Across America Day, March 2nd, and so I'm going to go read one of my favorite children's books to a couple of classrooms in elementary schools in my district, over Zoom, of course, but just a reminder to grab a book that you love and share it with someone in your life.
Thank you. Council, other comments under this agenda item? Okay, seeing Mr. Brady, tell us what our schedule of future meetings looks like.
So, Mayor, I think we talked about this earlier. We'll be meeting on Monday, so we'll meet ahead of the council meeting with our study session at 5:15, and then we'll have our city council meeting at 5:45. So we'll see you then.
And then, just to read, next Thursday, is that our strategic planning meeting?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Then the strategic planning meeting will be on Thursday, March 4th, and that will be at the, in the pipe, onstage of the Piper Theater.
For the, for folks who might be watching this on Channel 11 or social media, is the strategic planning meeting going to be televised?
No, everybody, it'll be in person.
Okay. Thank you, Council. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We'll do a voice vote, all in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.